Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Mayor Tabkey.
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Staff has none, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from council? All right, seeing none, entertainer motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilor Mokel, do you have a second?
Second.
Same by Councilor Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consent items. Are there anything to adjust from consent this evening, Mr. McNeil?
Nothing from staff.
Anything from council? Council Whiting.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Same by Councilor Luce. Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent business?
4A1 approves extension of a contract for transit services with Scott County Transit through December thirty first, two thousand fourteen, including amendment number one. 4B1 declares miscellaneous properties held by the police department to be surplus and authorizes proper sale or disposal of those items. 4B2 declares a two thousand four Chevrolet Cavalier and a two thousand seven Dodge Charger held by the police department to be surplus property and authorizes sale of these vehicles. 4C1 adopts resolution number seventy four thirty nine, accepting the bid and the warning contract for the two thousand fourteen Batumino's overlay project number two thousand fourteen dash two to do Batumino's Roadways, Inc. And approves a five percent contingency for use by the city engineer. 4C2 approves a consultant contract with WSB and Associates, Inc. for engineering services on a trail extension from Quarry Lake to Gateway Drive. 4C3 authorizes the appropriate city officials to execute a special services assessments agreements between Union Pacific Air Road Company and the City of Shakopee. 4C4 authorizes the purchase of a new chipper from Tri-State Bobcat in the amount of thirty-one thousand ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents. 4C5 authorizes appropriate city officials to enter doing a cleaning contract with Plymouth Ridge, Inc. doing business as Coverall Cleaning Concepts through February twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen, for seasonal park restroom cleaning. 4C6 authorizes the appropriate city officials to utilize a repurchase agreement with Ag Power Enterprises, Inc. for a two thousand twelve John Deere tractor in the amount of fifty-eight hundred ninety-six dollars. 4C7 authorizes the purchase of the following: one new cabin chassis from Midway Ford Commercial in the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars; one new box and hoist package from Chris Steel Truck Equipment in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred forty-three dollars sixty-eight cents; and one new ten-foot V plow from Chris Steel Truck Equipment Company in the amount of seventy-six hundred ninety-two-nine dollars. The action authorizes also, declares a two thousand Ford F-550 to be surplus property and authorizes proper disposal of this vehicle. 4C8 authorizes purchase of Outlet B Valley Creek Second Edition for the property tax liability of one hundred eighty-two dollars to be paid from the Storm Drainage Fund. 4D1 approves a position description for the engineering project coordinator and approves revised position description for paid-on call firefighters. 4D2 adopts resolution seventy-four forty concerning a two thousand fourteen pay plan for certain non-union employees of the city. 4E1 declares a coin-operated pool table and two sound speakers to be surplus property and authorizes proper disposal or sale of these items. 4F1 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of one million five hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars eighty-seven cents. 4F2 approves amendments to the March fourteenth and, excuse me, March eighteenth and April first, two thousand fourteen, city council meetings. 4F3 authorize the appropriate city officials to renew an annual Microsoft License Service Agreement through SHI in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars. 4F4 approves the application grants of massage therapy license to Ying Lee for Vogue Day Asian Massage, LLC, twelve forty, Third Avenue East. 4F5 authorize the closure of Lewis Street from third, first, Third Avenues on six Friday nights in the summer from six to nine P.M. for the Shakopee Downtown Car Classic Cruise. 4F6 authorizes the purchase of four electrical panels at City Hall and the purchase installation of new carpeting for portions of fire station number one at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. 4F7 approves amendments to the city feeds schedules in the areas of administration, economic development, building inspections, and parking recreation. And finally, 4F8 adopts resolution number seventy-four forty-one, calling for public hearing to be held seven P.M. on May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, regarding the issuance of health care facilities, revenue refunding bonds for the benefit of Saint Francis Regional Medical Center.
We should have taken a recess in the middle of that one, just to give you a little bit of a break there. Wow. All right, any discussion on those items? Council Luce.
Got a couple things here. The cleaning contract for the parks restrooms, the numbers come out awfully low in my book. I just think staff needs to maybe keep an eye on this one, make sure they're doing their job properly.
Okay.
For what they're saying they're doing, the price is very, very low. The other one, the car show, would it be possible for the police department to look into possibly allowing people to walk around with a beer? I've had that brought to my attention a couple of times. It's kind of killing the car show that people can't wander around, talk, have a beer. Just be something for them to look into.
Okay.
And.
Report back.
Go ahead.
Ms. Lynnan?
Yeah, I suggest that that might be something they consider looking at for next year. It's kind of late in the game now.
Mr. Mayor, we'll take a look at if something can be done this year. We'll certainly, we'll report back to you either way.
Sounds good. And the carpeting up the fire station, there's some carpeting back here that looks worse than it does up there, so I just have a question on that.
All right.
That's just my comments.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. This is an item where limited to five minutes per person, per subject. Longer presentations need to be scheduled through Mr. McNeil or Ms. Lynnahan at this meeting's cable cast speakers must approach the microphone at the podium for the benefit of viewers and other attendees. I know we've got a couple people who'd like to talk tonight, so you guys, whenever you're ready, when you come up, make sure to sign in with name and address and introduce yourself, if you could, please. No, you're together, you can go up, yeah. Unless you're going to say opposite things, then I, all right. You can start it whenever you're ready up there. Just introduce yourself, please.
My name is Chris Dirks. I live at eleven ninety-nine Tyler Street in Shakopee. Lived here all my life. And this is my son, Chance Dirks, who lives at.
Eleven seventy-six Jackson Street.
And we have a request for a four-way stop on the corner of Twelfth and Tyler and Twelfth and Jackson. We went around and collected the signatures that were required for us to give you this petition. I know in two thousand ten I met with, well, not two thousand ten, April second I met with Bruce and talked to him about what we needed to do to get a sign put back up there. He said that the city had done a survey in two thousand and ten and the stop sign that was up on Twelfth and Harrison didn't qualify to be there. But what he didn't know was that a citizen petitioned to get that stop sign put in in the eighties for the safety of his kids because the traffic is going too fast. Since we've redone all the streets up there.
The speed bumps aren't there anymore?
Nothing's there.
No, nothing's there.
It's, it's terrible and it's just not worth losing a person's life. If it's inconveniencing somebody for five minutes because they have to stop at the four-way stop, it's not, it's, it's.
Out of the petition that we did have signed, out of the two, we only had three neighbors that declined on it. Otherwise, as soon as we said what we were doing, they were just like, well, where do I have to sign? They were all really agreeable with what we were doing, so.
So I guess we'd like to give you these petitions that we have signed and filled out and give them to you and would like to know what we're going to do.
Thank you. This is something that gets passed to the traffic review board, and is it already on that list?
It's being scheduled. The meeting will be in May. We can certainly get to Mr. Dirks as far as when that will be held.
Perfect. That is good. So we'll get it on that list. Mr. Looney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and Mr. Dirks, Mr. Dirks, just want to make sure everybody, especially on TV watching, the petition is just a petition for us to do a study. Doesn't mean that the stop signs will go in. We'll do the study, come up with the numbers, traffic safety review committee reviews it and makes a recommendation. So that's what the petition really does. So we'll, we'll study it and look at our criteria. Again, if it's for both intersections, we'll do both intersections.
I know on, on Jackson Street, that's not a through street.
Yeah, that's not a through street, so.
Right. Is it, is your petition for both streets? I think I heard you say that.
Yes, it is for both streets, yes.
Now, we can do traffic counts from both intersections, not a problem.
So by going around and getting everyone's signature that really would like to see a four-way put in there, it still has to fall into the criteria of having a four-way stop?
That's what our policy is. It's just, the petition says you're, the citizens are interested in having a study done and we do the study.
Okay.
Council Lehman?
Little history on this. The, the reason the policy is like that is because in the, in the past, it would, we're visioned what it would be if we had a petition from residents in one neighborhood saying they wanted the signs removed and another neighborhood wanting signs put up and pretty soon you don't really have a rational basis behind the traffic flow. Now, I understand there are safety issues that we have, we have to look at, sight triangles, straight line speeds, things like that. And that's, that's a good reason to look at them and we're going to do that. But to just have signs put up because this group wants them or that group don't want them or somebody wants something changed, there's got to be some kind of a rational basis to make that change. And how does it impact the current traffic flow? That's how the policy was adopted years ago.
Right. I know when we were going out and getting signatures, a lot of people were asking if we were going to get signs put up on Eleventh Street. And we said, well, no, that's not where we live and we only have to go three hundred foot radius where these signs were to go. But up on Eleventh Street, there aren't any stop signs on there. It's, you have the right of way as we're, so maybe we should take out all the stop signs on Twelfth Street. And whoever comes to the intersection first has the right of way.
And that's exactly what the, they'll look at when they look at everything. So thank you very much. Does anybody else from council have questions? Thank you very much for going to all that work and doing that. If you'll give the petitions to Mark or Bruce here. And then we'll let you know, absolutely. You can let the neighbors know when the, it'll be up for at the traffic review board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Anybody else here for an item that is not on the agenda this evening? I know we've got a couple high school students here. Do you guys want to say hi? This isn't like a beauty pageant. You can't just wave from the back. You got to come up here and say hi if you want to. All right. Just to show that you're actually here. I signed my life away on their.
I would have waited till break, then I would have signed. My mom and me would have made a wait till break.
That would have been a smarter move.
I'm Ally King.
I'm Jordan Stavodah.
And we are in the CIS American Democracy Class at Shakopee High School and we have to participate in a political activity and then write an experiential paper on it, so.
You have to or you get to?
We get to. I'm really excited about it. That's why we're here.
All right, welcome. Thank you very much for being here. I went and spoke to their class a few weeks ago, so they already know that I mean. All right, anyone else for the open portion of the meeting? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to item number eight, recess for economic development authority meeting. Entertainer motion to recess?
So move.
Council Whiting, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Same by Councilor Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Lehman?
Call the Shakopee Economic Development Authority for April fifteenth to order. Madam Secretary, please note the role.
Yes, Mr. President.
Approval of the agenda is in front of you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tabkey, second by Mr. Whiting. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Consent items, three A, three B, bill list, minutes, any questions, Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, second by Ms. Mokel. Any discussion here?
Yeah. Are there any of four A through D that we'd want to add to consent? Anyone? Just thought.
Did you want to move some to consent?
I would move four A, four B, four C, four D to consent, just to get them done.
I'll second that.
The four D we're going to talk about, so that one's off.
Okay, so four A, four B, four C? Okay?
Okay with that.
Anything else? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Did one of you gals want to chair this meeting? Four D, consideration of commercial exterior improvement program loan for Journey Holdings, LLC, two thirty, First Avenue, Shakopee.
Good evening. We have been approached by Journey Holdings, LLC. They are requesting a facade improvement loan. They plan to do the front facade of their building and the back facade of their building. Before we start discussion, I, I think it's important to say that this is the auto parts store that is located on First Avenue. I think it would be First Avenue as you turn off. That building has been in disrepair. I think that it's come up numerous times during meetings about being an eyesore. Many people who come into our downtown, that is their entrance and they drive by there. So in this, this loan that they've asked for, they want to do the front of the building and the back of the building. The back of the building actually backs up to the city parking lot, just adjacent to Turtle's. It would be kind of in the back alley. So people could park in the city parking lot and go through the back door. They'd also like to replace the roof. They would like to raise the front of the building to match its neighbors and they would like to make a handicap accessible. So here's some pictures of what the auto parts store looks like today, as we've seen it. As you can see in the front, it is not equal to its neighbors and I know that some of the complaints they've had is about the roof and water from the neighbors' roofs coming onto that roof has been part of the problem. I'm assuming that and to bring it back to some type of historical look, they would like to raise the front of it. You can see in the second picture, there is, there's brick disrepair up in the front. There's, I think the windows, at this point, they're not asking for windows, but I'm assuming that will be something down the road that will need to be replaced. Councilmember Luce and I were looking earlier today at a map from eighteen eighty-four and this building was actually on that map. To me, this building does not look like a building from eighteen eighty-four. I would assume that it was built maybe in the sixties or seventies. Here's a nice shot of the back of the building. This building does back up to the back of the Domino's building, which is owned by Mr. Turtle. I know that that building actually has a very nice facade in the front and in the back and they would like to create the same type of look in the back of the building. This is a drawing of what they would like it to look like in the end. They would like to call it for the Journey Emporium. As you can see, they're bringing brick back to it. They're raising the front of it. And I know that we've also talked about potentially reaching out to them to see what other type of historical features they could bring back to the building during this. With this, estimated costs for the project are seventy-three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Currently, with the facade program, the maximum is fifteen thousand dollars. And as a few of you were actually on this, when we changed the regulations about the facade program and there was discussion about buildings that were in dire repair and that wanted to be brought back to a historical look. At that time, we talked about potentially raising the value for those. That's why I suggest that this group bring this to you. I know that it's higher than what you would typically do, but based on the things needed to be done on both the inside and the outside of the building, I told them that I would make that request on their behalf. They are requesting approximately thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. How this program works is that they would need to spend the money. Once the work is done, they would bring you the receipts and you would reimburse them based on the work that they did.
Is the reimbursement over a period of years or is it instantly?
It typically is instantly, but by the time that they start spending it, I'm assuming that they're going to want to bring us their receipts and we could either do it in one lump sum at the end or as they come in. It depends on how much money they have themselves to put into the project. But this is, as I said, this is just the exterior of the building and I know that the interior also needed rehab. So I didn't ask for a complete sources and uses, but that might be something that we'd want to ask in the future to see what the total project will include, interior and exterior. I'm assuming that doesn't include any of the merchandise that they're going to have to put inside, the display racks, the carpets, any computer systems, things like that. I'm assuming to start their business, it's going to be quite an expense for them.
Questions of staff?
I've got a couple questions. I'm, I'm, I can't go along with that amount of money. I know the number's at fifteen now. We spoke earlier, you told me the number used to be at twenty-five thousand. I'm looking at possibly doing a step back, go to the twenty-five thousand, but that, make that a maximum per building ever. You know, they can come to us twenty-five times for a thousand dollars, but that's all they're going to get.
As Councilmember Luce is bringing up, when Babes redid their exterior, they did the front, the side, and the back. At the time, the maximum was twenty-five thousand. That was prior to my arrival, so I'm not exactly sure what Mary spent to rehab Babes, but I have a feeling that it costs more than the fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I think the total cost is what is a separate issue from what the amount of participation that the policy or the body is willing to go. I think that's the question, is the amount of our participation, not what the, what the level of improvement that the property owner wants to make. That's pretty much a property owner's decision. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Whiting?
No, I think this is an interesting opportunity to utilize this for historic restoration project. Anytime you're using brick and mortar materials, brick facade, restoring that look of that historic downtown area. I, I would say that it is going to cost you more money for first, first of all, and it's going to add so much more value to your historic downtown. This is one of the cases, you know, we're, we're going to look at, this is one of the first ones that we're going to look at with this historic look. And you will find that they, they do cost more, but I think the value for all of the downtown, not just the business owner there, but, but our entire downtown, and we've talked about that for years, trying to maintain that historic look and that historic character. You could do it a lot cheaper putting vinyl siding on there, but when you do that brick look, it just adds so much more value to everything, so.
I did create this for you. I wasn't sure if you knew where we were at with the facade budget, so I wanted to have a spreadsheet for you to see. In two thousand thirteen, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was allocated during that year the Eagles came forward and Valley Sports came forward. In two thousand fourteen, another fifty thousand dollars was allocated. The budget, as I see it, as it stands right now, is that approximately, if both the Eagles, if the Eagles comes with the full amount and Valley Sports, which they haven't today, but they would be, would be at a hundred and ninety thousand. So if you were to approve, and you just approved Bill Togary and the Choice and the Journey Holdings, you would still have a hundred and thirty-five thousand left in that account. I wasn't sure if this was helpful to you or not to see this, but I wanted you to, in case you had any questions.
Well, I think, I think my concern personally would be, you know, we could play devil's advocate with Member Whiting. We could pay the whole, whole bill and really help them out and, and maybe go further than that and do a couple more buildings.
Is that a motion?
Even without participation from the property owner. Or maybe we could force it on a property owner that doesn't want to do it. Exactly where are we, where are we going to go here? And that's just not the policy. So we're, we're, we set a policy and then we're not going to follow our policy, so. I don't know that that makes a whole lot of sense, Mr.?
Um, yeah, I don't agree that this is not following our policy because it's, it is multiple projects for this, this building there's been. Are we, we redid the, or the, the project so that it would be exterior improvement as opposed to just facade? So, I mean, there have been multiple companies and multiple businesses in town who've used this in separate years and at different times and those kinds of things, when they could have just done it all at once. when they could have just done it all at once, um, at those kinds of things. And this is really three different projects, the back, the front, and the roof are the three different projects that are going on with this. And, I mean, they, they could do the front and the roof now and then hold the back off for a year and come back to us in a year. And, and we would have no reason to not allocate it at that point. So I, I have no problem with them coming forward, especially with, uh, a, uh, healthy balance in the fund right now, specifically for these types of projects. I mean, this is what we created it for, and it could be split up in any number of ways. So yeah, it's more than I think that we anticipated coming through. But I don't think it makes sense to have them wait over the course of three different years to do the projects.
Mr. Lewis?
I'm wondering if the purchaser did their job by looking the building over before they bought it. I mean, the roof is bad. Um, they should have caught that. If they bought the building right, they should have the money to fix it. I think we're setting a precedent that we're not gonna like in the future, because if we go to the max that they want, the next one's gonna come in at one fifty. Like Matt said, where does it stop?
Mr. Whiting?
From, uh, doing research on historic preservation, when you're doing that kind of work, most of the dollars, a higher majority of the dollars stay in town, rather than going out to buy aluminum and different pre-manufactured products. Uh, when you're restoring things, it, uh, it's mortar, it's brick, it's hardware. It's, uh, it's more value to the local businesses that are selling that product to, uh, the builders and things than it would be just to go in and restore it. That's from the facts, from the information that I've been trained in, that kind of historic preservation.
Kathy?
Um, the one thing that I want to point out, though, I think is, is that they, it's about setting a precedent. And if we, we came across with the fifteen being the max, and now we're gonna make a precedent of giving somebody thirty-six. And to your point, um, Mayor Tabkey, is that the other piece of this is when people apply, they get extra extended. So would it be better off if we're going to double that, that we just make the term extended?
Or take two applications? Fifteen, fifteen.
Yep.
One, one follow-up.
Mr. Whiting?
Mr. Maggio, there, there was a provision in this new policy about historic preservation.
You had talked about it the night that you passed it and that you, because we know that to actually bring something back to that historical look, it's gonna have more of a value, value. I think we were talking about Turtle Social Center. They wanted to replace the door on the side, just to replace that door to look like a historic, original door was three thousand dollars. And so at the time, Brian did not go forward with his. But, I mean, if you're looking at a door for an entryway, you know, I can't imagine what it would be if he would just went out and bought any kind of fiberglass door and put in there. Compared to the actual historic look, that is where the three thousand dollars comes in. So I think that was something that you had discussed, that potentially if it was a historic property, that you would like to give more.
I think we need to realize that the, the dollars that we're talking about here are actually tax dollars. And we're buying three thousand dollar doors, we're giving millions of dollars away in tax incentives. And we're doing a lot for a lot of different businesses, but we're doing very little for the actual homeowner. So I think we need to be cautious and kind of balance these things out a little bit. Three thousand dollars for a door is quite a bit.
Well, and at the time, Mr. Turtle did not come forward with his, but that would have been, I believe, the second or third time that the social center would have actually gotten a facade. So I think that is one of the things, is that some of the people keep coming back numerous times. But at the same time, when you have these historic properties, the upkeep and the work that needs to be done to them, it does add up.
Mr. Lewis?
I believe, to be fair to everybody, we need to put a cap on this. You know, like I said before, they can come back as many times as they want until they reach their cap. But to keep giving money, um, over and over, just makes no sense. The bill, the owner of the building has to stand on their own feet sometime.
Mr. Tabkey?
We, we actually, when we went through this ordinance, we, we talked about those kinds of things a lot. Uh, but the problem with that, that we, as we discussed it, was, um, it was very difficult for us to, um, so say the building changes owners, and so when do you draw that line as to where that twenty-five thousand dollars is? Or if something happens to building, if there's, uh, um, something that needs, some major work that needs to be done that was unanticipated five years ago, what's the, the length of that time that that is? Because we want, the reason why we have this is because it's better for all of the taxpayers and all of the, uh, businesses in downtown Shakopee to have buildings that look good, that are historically, uh, preserved, that are adding to the character and to the entire feel of, of Main Street Shakopee. And that's why we have these projects in place, is to help and incentivize folks to do those kinds of things. Because our, we're gonna, we're talking about investing a significant amount in downtown through other types of projects. And what's the point of doing that if buildings look like this one currently does? It's not gonna attract any other investments, it's not gonna attract other things in downtown Shakopee. And so we need to make sure, and, and I, I don't disagree with you at all, that, that, uh, that maybe thirty-six thousand dollars is too much. But I don't know exactly where we draw the line and where we change the line right now. Or if it makes any sense at all to have them do different applications. I don't, I mean, that's hoops and hurdles that we don't necessarily need to send people through. But if we want to have a max, that's, that's great as well, but we just need to make sure to define how that is, so it's understandable. So we're not, uh, setting the precedent that that's the direction that we're going without reasoning for it.
Start on the end.
You know, we've talked about our goals being maintaining our downtown and, um, trying to improve our downtown. Uh, we talk about, you know, the train noise and, um, the millions of dollars that that could cost to help protect and build up our downtown. These are the kind of things that are gonna help the downtown, because the guy next door is gonna say, hey, now I gotta keep up with the guy next door. So I'm gonna do a little painting and it, it kind of spreads that way. And we're gonna be talking about a Main Street program tonight. These are the little things that are gonna enhance our downtown. This, this is a little more than we've spent, but it, it, it does help the downtown. And it's exactly what we're trying to accomplish here. That's part of our goals, it's part of our vision. It's gonna cost money, and I think, uh, this is where we start, by reaching out and to that vision and that mission and that, and those goals. So I think, you know, we gotta really decide if this is what we want to do.
Mr. Lewis?
I could give some credit to raising the, that amount, but we're gonna have to do it in, um, more than a five-year guarantee. They'd have to move it out to ten, twelve years, something on that order. Uh, if they change, billing changes hands, we get the money back.
And I believe the owner wrote you a letter. Unfortunately, Kyle Hansen, who's, I believe, originally from Shakopee, was not able to be here tonight. He is in Arizona for their version of Bike Week, and that's a big week for them, so that's where they're at right now. But he did write you a letter to address that. I do also believe that he's going to hire Rob O'Brien to do the work on the building, which is also another Shakopee business, another Shakopee firm that will be doing the work on it. And I was gonna try to figure out how long that store has been empty for. I'm not sure, Mr. McNeil, if you remember how long that store has been sitting empty for.
Year and a half?
Oh, gosh.
Two years?
Six years, you think?
Really?
Six to seven years. So the, the businesses around there who have heard that a specialty retail shop is going in there have been very excited. They think this is gonna help bring a new crowd of people to the downtown, and that was another reason that I, that I said I would bring this to you tonight.
Since I'm sensing three in support of, of the fifteen thousand cap, would you prefer this motion be modified to that or to table it and bring it back?
If you want to say that you wanted to give him the fifteen, you are welcome to do that. I think that he would like to start work. They would like to start operating out of that building as soon as possible, so.
Okay. Is there a motion in that effect?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Um, I make a motion to approve commercial exterior improvement loan in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and authorize the appropriate officials to enter into repayment agreement with Journey Holdings LLC.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I want that modified to make it out to twelve years.
Yes.
Mr. President, I, I think the owner, if I read the packet right, indicated they would be willing to do seven?
Yes.
So if, you don't have to do seven, but I think you should specify the length of the payout as part of the motion.
Okay. Then I will, uh, amend that emotion, um, to approve, I make a motion to approve commercial exterior improvement loan in the amount of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and authorize the appropriate officials to enter into repayment agreement of seven years with Journey Holdings LLC.
I'll second that.
Did you re, okay. So that's a modified in the year, okay. Discussion. I, I would be more apt to approve two separate applications of fifteen each to stay within our, and that set of precedents. And I'm, I'm, I totally agree with Member Lewis that we could find ourselves in a position of somebody coming in every single year until a project is completed and the whole thing's rebuilt, all at the taxpayer's expense. And if that's the case, we might as well just make a policy, buy all the properties and the city own them and the city maintain them. So that's my comment. Anyway, next. All right, go ahead.
I, I would agree with you on two, two fifteens maximum. And, uh, I would still like to see a longer time period on it if we're gonna do a, a double. Five years is not enough. Not on that amount of money.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, aye. Motion passes.
Was that four, one?
Four to one.
Elsewhere.
Myself and a negative. Four E. Samantha, authorization of a service agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for the Main Street program.
Yes, thank you. As we've been talking about the past few months, the city and the Chamber of Commerce have partnered together to enter into an agreement and apply for application into the Main Street program. So I think it's interesting to note that with the Main Street program, it's not something that you're automatically enrolled in. We'd actually have to go through the application process. We would have to be accepted. Part of becoming a Main Street community requires that you hire a full-time person. Laura Pico has actually been hired as the full-time Main Street coordinator. And now we would like to enter into a service agreement with the Shakopee Chamber for her services. And so that has been attached for you tonight.
What does this person do?
So this person, and I've actually made a PowerPoint of the four different areas of the Main Street program that they focus in. They focus in design, organization, promotion, and economic restructuring. So Laura's duties will be to work with businesses on these four different areas. So the businesses that she would work with, and they would actually be local volunteers from all over town. So you don't even have to be a business owner. If you're somebody who lives in Shakopee and it's important to you that we have events in the downtown, you may want to work on the Promotion Committee. So they would plan events such as farmers' markets, things like that, here in the downtown, that would kind of create a heart of our city here in this area. I think that we've talked in the past that there's some people who live in Shakopee who don't even know that we have a downtown. So Laura's job would be to work with these people, to bring people into our downtown. She would also work on the design. I know we've had some people say when they come for Derby Days, you know, there's no bike racks down here for people. There's no park benches for people to sit on, things like that. That would be Laura's job, would be to work to make sure that the things that people want in their downtown are here. And I, you know, one of the examples that we gave is Laura came early and spent the day here, and she said, you know, there's really nothing that made me want to linger in the downtown. And I think that's something that's also come out of our one-on-one corridor study, that we need to have the type of things down here that make people want to come and spend a few hours, not just come to the bakery, get what they need, and drive away. We actually want to create a place where people come and congregate together as a community. So that's something that Laura would work to do.
Will this include the area on Beurling and Marshall and the industrial park?
The area that's actually been mapped out in the Main Street has gone down to Danger Fields, down to Rar, and kind of in between. There's kind of been a looped area. That's what was initially planned. I know that the actual Main Street person from the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota is gonna come out and work with the Chamber and with Laura and try to figure out that designation. That would be my preference, is that it would go from Danger Fields down to Rar and kind of include the historic area in the middle. I think right now, we don't want it to be too big of an area. We want to make sure that it's manageable. One of the nice things is that the Main Street asks that you do a survey of how many people live in that area and how many businesses you have in that area. If you were to ask me right now how many businesses we have, I could not tell you. I cannot tell you what kind of businesses we have. I can't tell you how many people live here. So that's gonna be something that will be worked on, is we'll get together a list. So if somebody does ask us that, that's something that we can easily tell. And some of the bigger areas, it would be easy for me to call Steve Solto and ask him, Steve, how many businesses do you have out there? Do you know about how many employees? I think Steve would be able to give me that information. That is not something that you can gather so quickly in the downtown area, because there's so many independent business owners, independent building owners, things like that. It isn't something that we're able to put together quickly.
Is the twenty-five thousand city cost participation fifty percent of the total cost?
I actually think that there may be more than that. So the Chamber has thrown in a certain portion of cash and in-kind services, so Laura will be housed at the Chamber. She'll be a Chamber employee. And then the city threw in twenty-five thousand. There'll also be the need to do some fundraising. I don't think that fifty thousand dollars is gonna support some of the activities and things that we want to do in the downtown. So by having Laura here, she'll organize events that will then raise money to sustain the program.
Any questions for staff? What's the wishes of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the appropriate officials to enter into a service contract with the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce for the Main Street program.
There's a motion by Ms. Mokel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Mr. Tabkey. Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got one thing to say. I'm really excited about this program. I welcome Laura to, uh, the family here and all the good things that we've got going on in, uh, Main Street Shakopee. So I'm really excited about, uh, this happening as long as it's a, uh, a vote here that goes that direction in, uh, a minute or two. So it's a really exciting program that'll be great for, uh, Shakopee and the surrounding area. So thank you for everybody's hard work on getting this done.
Is Laura in the audience?
Yes. Laura is in the audience.
She met everybody else before.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Whiting?
Can we bring Laura up to introduce herself to the?
Absolutely.
The audience and?
I don't want to put Laura on the spot.
Laura on the spot.
She's been here five days.
Please come on up and state your name.
We want to see how shy she is.
A brief overview of what you've done and?
Yeah, uh, well, I don't have an address in Shakopee yet, unfortunately, so we can't put it in the record, but I'm looking. Uh, so I moved up from Sioux City, Iowa, where I worked for ISU Extension. And I did community organizing for the local food movement, so local and regional small food and farming businesses. Um, so I did a lot of community organizing. And I did, I came to Shakopee a day before, walked the downtown. I'm really excited to see a lot of potential, a lot of good gems, a lot of solid businesses. But also saw a lot of things that we can work on too, including facade impro- improvements, bringing people downtown, keeping people lingering. I'm really excited. I've gone to two days of training in Owatonna already and have one more day of training tomorrow. And then we'll kind of dive in and start gathering ideas, uh, from people in the community about what they'd like to see and do. And, um, we're gonna make it happen, so.
And one thing, there will be a steering committee that will actually help to give the direction for Laura. I'll be on the steering committee, and we would like to ask one of you as councilmembers to be on that committee. So I don't know if anyone wants to quick jump out of their seat and raise their hand, if you wanna call me later on and volunteer, however you want to do that. But please do consider joining that steering committee along with me and Lauren and some members of the community. And, and I think that there will be some, some businesses, that's one of the things that we've talked about, is it takes more than just the downtown to support your downtown. So we really need to bring the entire community together, and that's what we're hoping to do in this area.
Thanks for coming up and sharing it with us.
Yep, and one last thing, I'm available, so do contact me and give me your thoughts in the meantime, anyone in this room, actually, so, thanks.
Thanks.
Any else?
Um, the only two things I have to say, um, I'm glad to see that hopefully two people from the city will be on the committee. And the liability factor for the city has been negated, um, with the contract. That's a good thing. And hopefully in a year, we're gonna see some proof.
You know, I think it's, uh, you know, they talk about the program in the first year, I don't know that we're gonna see a ton of miracles, but I'm super excited by year three, year five, that we're gonna track this every single year. And that's part of being, working with the Preservation Alliance, is that they ask you to track all these things on an annual basis. So I think that'll be exciting to see where we're at right now and what our downtown looks like right now and where we're gonna be in five years. And I know with Laura on board, we're gonna do great things.
I have a question, Samantha, about, uh, item number, sorry.
No, you're okay.
Item number D.
Yep.
And I, I guess I'm not really understanding what it's saying. Interest by city or city E, EDA officials, no elected official, officer, or employee of the city EDA or city shall during his or her tenure or employment and for one year after have any interest, direct or indirect, in this contract or the proceeds thereof. It seems to me that there's a direct, uh, interest by the city in this contract.
Well, and I think what they're saying is that you, um, or someone has a, let's say I own a business here in the downtown and I'm gonna be working with this and try to get Laura to pass some programs or try to get Laura to-
or try to get Laura to come to the city to pass some programs that would benefit me. Mr. Thompson, is that basically what it is saying? That you don't have any direct involvement through it?
Yes, Mr., um, as President of the, of the EDA, basically what that means is that, um, if you're an office employee, you can't get benefited by this contract while you have that position or year thereafter. That, that's what it means. In other words, it's, uh, well, that's what it means.
Is it the city doing this to try to improve its city, which is a benefit to the city?
I think it means on a personal, individual.
No, we're talking, we're talking officers, employees of the EDA or the city, not the city itself. It's, it's people. Cannot have, any, anyone, any employee associated with the city or the EDA cannot have an interest in any of the proceeds of this contract.
Individually, not as a body.
Individually, not the body, individually.
Got it. Okay.
There.
About legal mumbo jumbo people. Mr. Whiting.
I just want to say I'm excited about this program and, um, know that it's gonna move along, you know, it might take some time, but, uh, uh, progress is good. And, and progress takes a first step, and, um, you know, we're stepping out tonight, so thank you.
Any other discussion?
Um, when I made the comment of seeing results, I wasn't looking for large, I just would like to see something.
And I agree with you, I definitely agree with you, and I think that there's some things that could be, as Laura said, some small improvements that could get us a long ways. And one of the things we've teased a few of our business owners about is the signs in their windows when they have a vacant property. We're really hoping to have some signs made with the Main Street logo and a link where they can go and see their properties instead of a pink or green sign that says, "Call me," at this number. So just even little things like that will help make it look more uniform and better as you're coming into the area.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Mr. Whiting.
Make a motion to adjourn till Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty fourteen at seven PM.
Second about Mr.?
I'll second.
Mrs. Mokel. Motion adjourned by Mr. Whiting, second by Kathy Mokel. Any discussion hearing? None. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes, we adjourn.
Alright, we reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting, we're gonna switch real quick to item number ten F one. Is, uh, general administration authorization to enter in a service agreement with Shakopee's area Chamber of Commerce for the Main Street program. So we just approved that at, uh, EDA level, and we're gonna clear out the, uh, Council one currently. So if somebody could offer motion, uh, ten F one, Council Whiting.
Like to make a motion, uh, authorize the appropriate officials to enter into a service contract with Shakopee Area Chamber of Commerce for the Main Street program.
You got a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council Mokel, any discussion?
I don't know, read through this.
Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we are now going to, uh, hop back in the agenda to ten A one. Community development update on the current status of discuss, discussions with Minnesota Valley Transit Authority regarding transit service consolidations. Mr. Leek.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Patience while I call the, uh, PowerPoint presentation up for the audience. Keep this relatively brief, um, the introduction here is that the purpose of this update is to let you know where we are in the discussions regarding consolidation of transit services between Prior Lake, Shakopee, and Minnesota Valley Transit. You're probably aware that there are two groups that have been working on this. One of them is the technical work group made up of the staff from those agencies. Uh, we also have attorneys involved for all of the agencies as well. Uh, there's the elected work group, which has also met, I believe, three times. Counselor Lou's is a member of that group, and Mr. McNeil has participated as well. I'm not presenting to you any draft agreements this evening, but you will have seen in your packet that the intention is to bring two agreements to you, probably in June. One is a memorandum of consolidation, it's a sort of intent document. And the second is a proposed amendment to the joint powers agreement for MBTA. So what I'm briefly going to cover are the guiding principles that have been identified by those two work groups. I won't call them by their acronyms. Um, a little bit of a financial update, contract update, and then take your questions and concerns, uh, and identify what the next steps are. My real intent with you this evening is to see if you are still in agreement with moving forward with the discussions according to the timeline that I show you, and according to the guiding principles that are here. Um, the technical work group has done most of the behind-the-scenes lifting, and it agreed early on that the Shakopee Circulator, as well as the Blue Express, should continue to operate at least for the first year or two, at the same level of service, pending a more detailed look, especially with respect to the Circulator. At the TPT, the Transit Planning Team, we had been looking at whether or not we should do a study for Northern Scott County Circulator Service, and so we brought that to the table. Um, updated agreements with MBTA would have to be in place before Prior Lake, Shakopee, and Scott County's agreements are terminated. As some of you know, maybe not all of you do, we have agreements related to the construction and operation of the three park and rides, which are of course not in city ownership, as well as maintenance and agreements related to the operation of the Blue Express service. So there are a number of agreements that have already been in place that have served as sort of de facto joint powers agreements. Um, it was decided it would be helpful to have an individual, uh, an independent financial report, and, uh, that is underway, as you will have seen the packet. And then we identified what we think are guiding principles for capturing the intent of merging services. And those guiding principles are, as I stated before, to maintain at least at a minimum, the existing level of services. Now, in my discussions with our city attorney, I've also tried to insert in the attorney's discussion, the notion that if the demand for increased services is there, there would be some consideration of increased services, not just maintaining existing services and reducing them if ridership went down. Part of the reason for that is that our services have increased in ridership over the last several years. So looking at that aspect made sense as well. Uh, maintain and upgrade existing capital assets. For the city of Shakopee, we basically have eleven buses that are capital assets. They are part of the regional fleet, so we lease them from the Metropolitan Council, we don't hold title to them. There are three park and ride facilities with about fifteen hundred spaces capacity. As you know, the South Bridge is owned by the county. Uh, there's a long-term lease between the county and the Shakopee Meadowbank and Sioux for Eagle Creek Transit Station. And right now, Marshall Road Transit Station is partially owned by Mendat because of the funding source, those Chapter one fifty-two bonds. And the building is basically owned by Scott County. So those are capital assets, but they are not the city's directly. Um, and I should note, if you're not aware of it, that Scott County is already a member of the Board of Directors of Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. So if we bring this to fruition, there would be three Scott County representatives at a minimum on that board. There's an intent to review the overall service plan, both the express and local services, and consider service adjustments. And at the technical work group, we've sort of agreed that it makes sense to operate at least for that first year with the current service and start looking at what might need adjusting. Um, and that group developed a work plan, which was brought to the, um, elected work group to look at, and you'll see some elements of that as well. There's been a substantial financial review, and your finance director Julie Linehan has been key. She's not sitting there right now. But she has been key to that, the financial director for Prior Lake and MBTA have also obviously been involved. They've identified the existing operational costs of our services with our assistance. I mentioned that independent study, and they identified Springstead to do that study at a cost of about twelve thousand dollars. And the intent is that MBTA would pay half, or about six thousand. Each of the cities would contribute twenty-five percent to that study. That's about three thousand apiece, so I'd like to know that you're in consensus with following that. I've talked it, about it with Ms. Linehan in great detail. Uh, the independent financial report looks at about a five-year window. Um, hopefully will give an outside perspective of what the impact is, not only to our cities, but also to MBTA. One of the nice complexities of funding transit in the region is that some of our transit fund balance, I think our fund, uh, cash position is about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, will probably get transferred to MBTA, and that has an impact on the amount of regionally allocated M Best that they're entitled to. So they need to take a look at that as well, in terms of what the impact is on services. Another couple of key components are, Prior Lake has a CMAC application that was approved, buses are finally being ordered, only several years after they were supposed to be. Uh, Shakopee has a CMAC grant that was awarded for another three buses and some operational costs. And so we want to make sure, um, how those will operate once the transition takes to MBTA. At a threshold level, that Met Council will accept the transfer of those obligations among our organizations. Um, the draft report, as I mentioned, is due this week. We have a technical work group meeting on the seventeenth to review the findings, and it will be brought to the elected work group on the twenty-fourth. I already mentioned some of the agreements that we've, um, got in place, so I won't talk much about those. And then the milestone update, we've just completed the document and service reviews. We're in the process in April of considering the points of agreement and draft JPA. Now, I will just preview an issue for you. Um, I think there is some concern on the part of MBTA's attorney that the two cities may be looking for more of a guarantee of service than they can provide. And so the attorneys are discussing that, as well as with our staffs, and hopefully we'll have that worked out before an agreement comes to you. Um, in July, we'll finalize the financial review de, details. Um, and as you saw previously, the intent is to bring the JPA, the memorandum of consolidation, to about June or early July. Um, if both the city councils approve it, it would then go out to the five remaining members of MBTA, the other two cities that are part of that joint, uh, partnership. They all have to approve it for it to be modified, and their board to go from, I think it's seven members right now, to nine with the two additional cities. Um, and then rollout of the service would begin on January first. Again, probably there would not be a lot of change in what people would see who use the service, except that we would transfer customer service to the contacts for MBTA. Right now, they're handled through Scott County. So, as I said, I'm looking for consensus from you about whether or not you agree with those guiding principles and moving forward with the timeline that I've outlined. Other than that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions?
A host of questions.
Council Whiting.
Well, you know, they always say nothing changes until it changes, and, um, many of our routes may be underutilized at times and may be able to be adjusted for better ridership. But I just want to make sure, and I know it states in here that we're not gonna lose any, um, stops and, and routes right now. We don't have any guarantees though, this is a question, do we have any guarantees that that won't change, or?
That is, Counselor, um, one of the things that I said is under discussion, especially with the attorneys. Um, as staff at the two cities, we are concerned that there not be a reduction in service for our residents. For us, it's especially true with the Circulator. The Blue Express is gonna be there even if it's not called Blue Express. One of the things that is a positive for Minnesota Valley Transit is they don't have a presence in the one sixty-nine corridor. That's a very substantial corridor for commuting. Um, but the Circulator is a different matter, and the reason it's a concern to folks like me and the staff over at Prior Lake is that we with that Circulator serve our transit-dependent population. If you look at our survey results for the Blue Express, what other transit providers show for their express service is true here. It's higher-income folks that are making a choice to use transit, they don't have to use transit. But that Circulator service that we have in place really does serve a transit-dependent population. We want to make sure that that service doesn't go away. You're right, there are no guarantees, um, but one of the things that will be in the joint powers agreement are provisions by which the two cities could exit that agreement if the two cities felt that the service they were looking for was not being provided.
Thank you.
Counselor Lou's?
The seven hundred and fifty thousand that's in the, uh, plan right now, and we have to turn over, um, say we opt out in a year, we lost that?
Um, that again is a point of discussion with respect to those two agreements. Our intent through our attorneys at Prior Lake and Shakopee is that that exit would allow for reclamation of assets. Um, perhaps not all of them, but a substantial amount. And the reason I've been especially concerned about this, for those of you who are not as familiar with transit in Shakopee, is that part of the reason we have that fund balance is that your community development director said, and Counselor Layman has asked me a lot of questions about this over the years. Um, we want to expand service to meet additional demands. Um, with the CMAC applications, for example, or even the Job Access Reverse Commute Service that we operate, there's a limited number of years of service match that's provided with those funds. So part of the reason for Prior Lake and Shakopee to have that fund balance is to make sure that we could operate that service once the grant period is over. So we're trying to craft amendments to the JPA and to that consolidation agreement that will allow for that kind of exit. That's not been totally worked out, but that's the intent.
Counselor Lou's? There was some talk about buying down that amount, um, is that possible, or are you not gonna be able to do it?
Yes, Counselor Lou's, member of the, members of the council, I think that's still under discussion. I think, Julie, help me, I think there are some mixed messages right now in the discussion about whether or not that can be done. Let me give you some examples. We know that the park and ride at Marshall Road will require at some point, because of the growth of traffic there, from the park and ride, a signal at Weston Court and County Road sixteen. So one of our questions that we're asking is, is there a way to essentially prepay the city's share of that signal, thereby buying down that amount? We're still in discussion about that, as I said, I think there are some mixed signals, and we'll have to work through that. I, I suspect that we will not end up with a full cash balance transfer in this arrangement, but what the actual cash transferred will be, I'm not sure yet.
Counselor Layman.
Mr. Leek, by all means correct me if I'm wrong, over the years, the dollars allocated or doled out to Shakopee's transportation system has been woefully inadequate for the amount of growth that we've seen.
Well, at the risk of Met Council members watching, I'm not sure I'll go that far. But, as you know, M Best has been a pretty volatile source of operational funding. The city of Shakopee was better off a few years ago, several years ago now actually, when we funded transit from the property tax. Because our property tax rates grew, and the amount we collected grew, so it meant that we had a more predictable operational source. We've gone through a situation that just ended this last year, where a number of providers, um, had their amount of M Best artificially reduced. Um, ours went from roughly eighty thousand a year to about fif, or a month, to about fifty thousand a month for a two-year period. That was a freeze imposed by the legislature, and I think it's fair to say that the regional agency was behind that. Because they were looking at the transit fund balances in Maple Grove, Plymouth, Shakopee, Prior Lake, and so on. Thanks, it's just the aftermath of the cold, I'm not sure there's much we can do about it. And so Maple Grove, for example, for two years didn't receive any M Best. Because the Met Council had determined that they had far too much money in their transit fund, and they were gonna essentially force it to be bought down. That freeze went off for the current year, however, M Best is still a volatile source. I know Julie has seen the numbers as well. I know Julie has seen the numbers as well. But our monthly M Best has fluctuated from about eighty-five thousand down to currently, I think, about seventy thousand a month. And so, for a number of years, we have been spending down that reserve because we didn't have the same amount of operational revenue as operational cost. You're absolutely right.
At some point, we're not going to be able, it's not sustainable.
Well, and those of you who were on the council at the time, we brought to you in 2012 the updated Scott County Transit Capital and Operations Plan, may remember that we said unless things improve dramatically, somewhere around 2016 to 2018, if we continue operating the way that we do, we may have a funding issue and not be able to fund all of the services that we contemplated having in place. Now, part of the thought about the consolidation with MBTA is, given their structure, they are the largest opt-out or alternative transit provider. There may be some economies of scale that will be beneficial. That may stave that off. But every alternative regional transit provider in the metropolitan area has that issue on the horizon at some point.
Now, for years, I've been preaching to the choir about making these connections between various service providers, whether it's Shakopee connecting up with Eden Prairie Station or the Burnsville Station. Then the ridership has a larger pool of options of where they can get to, instead of just what is at the station. And I've preached that to the Met Council, again, at the 169 corridor meeting.
Thank you for that.
It seems to be something that they are missing as the larger oversight of the whole transportation system. And they just seem to be missing the most important piece, in my mind, unless I'm wrong, of making these connections, because it benefits every single person. It benefits the rider, it benefits the opt-out service provider, us, it benefits our partners across the river, because now they get ridership, and it benefits the whole system, because they're receiving revenue. So I don't know why they don't make that a priority, because it seems to, it seems to make sense, but they just...
Counselor Lehman, you're absolutely correct, but if you'll allow me just a moment for commentary, because I do think this is important for you, and I know Mr. McNeil has it in mind. The Thrive MSP 2040 document is out for review. Comments are due on April 28th. And I think the answer to your question is this. In very brief summary, the Met Council, in its current leadership, and this has been true for a couple of cycles of leadership, really believes that there are limited resources for transit and transportation in the region. And more importantly, more than other leadership at the Met Council even, believes that those resources need to really be focused into Minneapolis-St. Paul and the immediately surrounding suburbs. So if you look at that Thrive MSP document, it now has an expanded classification system for communities. Shakopee and Savage happen to be what's called suburban edge. We've gone from roughly sixteen thousand a couple of decades ago to nearly forty thousand, but we're still suburban edge. And as you know, Savage is nearly fully developed. Prior Lake is called emerging suburban edge. And if you go further into the document, it really says that funding for transportation and transit are really going to be focused on the two core cities and the identified suburbs, not the suburban edge, and not the emerging suburban edge. So one of our comments from Scott County and from our city will be, you need to reclassify us, because with populations of forty and thirty thousand, we are not at the edge of anything anymore. And we've got job concentrations that you're ignoring. If you look at the employment map, that shows, I think it's areas with sixteen thousand or more is important concentrations. Well, we've got almost twenty thousand today, and it's not on that initial map. So it really, I think, is a function of a philosophical approach that the leadership there is taking, that number one, there are limited resources, number two, that we need to focus them in certain key areas, and we think those key areas are the central cities and the first-tier suburbs. I don't think about that stuff much at all.
They can't afford the roads, they can't afford the buses. They're cutting people's funding, so they're going to build a 1.7 billion dollar train.
Let's ask the mayor of Minneapolis about that, and see what the timeline is. But I will say that, if that comes to fruition, at a staff level, we talked about an application being made by Scott County that talks about providing service to that area, not just because of the light rail line, but also because of the employment concentrations. We've tried to tackle that issue a couple of times in my tenure here, and it's still an important employment concentration for a number of our residents. So we may try to get a piece of that pie, so that we can make some more of those connections that are hard to make.
Other questions?
I've got a couple here with Met Council. Is there any, are we at risk of them not allowing, if they could, not allowing this to happen, or they're not going to be happy with this, or how is that looked upon?
Mayor, council members, I don't think that's a real risk, and the reason I don't is, some of you will remember that there was an Office of Legislative Auditors' Report on transit services in the region. And it suggested that some consolidation should take place. And the Met Council, current leadership really buys that notion that it's too fragmented now. So I won't say that doesn't mean that the current leadership may not have some view of a larger Met Council-controlled regional agency at some time, but I don't see them opposing this kind of consolidation of service.
And then with that, is there, are there any, has there been any discussion with service levels absolutely not decreasing, but giving access from Shakopee to St. Paul and the U of M campus and other things like that? Is it anticipated that services will increase in that direction with this merger?
We have had discussions about that at the technical work group level, and we think there should be some real opportunities to make connections. One of them that we've talked about, just theoretically, is a connection from Marshall Road Transit Station to Burnsville Transit Hub, which then opens up connections to St. Paul, the Mall of America, and the University of Minnesota that we currently can't provide with our bus fleet.
Perfect. Any further questions or major objections for where we're moving with everything here? All right.
So I take it there's consensus. We move ahead, per the guiding principles that I've outlined for you tonight.
I believe that is true.
Thanks for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Great job. All right, moving on to item number 10C1, consider approving streetlights on Eagle Creek Boulevard from CASA 17 to CASA 83.
Mr. Looney?
Thank you, Mayor. Member of the council? Okay. Bringing you this item for lights on Eagle Creek Boulevard, it's something that we've had in the past in the capital improvement program, as far back as 2005. At that time, it still was a county road, but we have an existing overhead power line that runs on the north side of Eagle Creek Boulevard, from Marshall Road all the way to County Road 83. We are now, you approve Batuminus roadways for a overlay project. Part of the overlay project is to redo the pavement on Eagle Creek Boulevard, as well as the Batuminus Trail. So we'll have a fairly new-looking corridor. With this, I've worked with Shakopee Public Utilities, and included in your packet, a plan to light up the corridor according to city policy, recently approved, you know, street lighting policy with LED lights. And we would recommend option B. There was just a slight difference, and I can go through that on the drawings here, but option B and an estimated cost of about fifty-five thousand dollars. And this cost would come out of the capital improvement fund. If you look at the drawing here, and this is kind of split screen. Might have to use the other drawing here. So it doesn't get too confusing. We start at seventeen here, and the lights are all along the north side. That's where the trail is located. Existing overhead power line is in there. And where we have existing lights at the street intersections, we will remove those lights and put in the new standard poles and LED lights. Otherwise, you'd have a white light and a yellow light, but we want to upgrade it. Spuck is all for reducing the power consumption, and we've kind of agreed through that. So this is Roundhouse Street here, Saracen Street here. And then, if we go on this side, again, we're on the north side. Albecheva Road is right here, Howard Trail is right here. And then, keep on going down the line on Burling Drive. Again, we were, we're going to remove the lights at Burling Drive and put in new lights. Continue to go through here, and we're shifting, option B is just shifting it over one pole. Doesn't show up here, so the pole would be one shift over, and then we'd put the new light here just past the bridge. And in the last segment here, Tyrone Drive is here. We put a light on this side of, on this side for the street intersection, light up the intersection all the way to here. There's plenty of lights in this intersection with this area here, and when this develops, we may look at putting additional lights when that commercial development comes in. That's really, really the project, and the reason it's coming to you tonight, we haven't really talked about it. I mean, we had had it in previous capital improvement programs. And the cost for the amount of lights for a two-mile segment is actually pretty reasonable because of the existing overhead poles that we're attaching to. And Shakopee Public Utilities would do the work.
Questions?
Two questions.
Counselor Lehman?
How does this see, does it have any impact on the Snowmobile Trail? Since the poles are already there?
Poles are already there.
Okay. Second would be the 2005 to 2009 CIP allocated thirty thousand. Was that amount carried over forward to a current CIP at a greater amount to cover what the projected cost is?
It just never was spent. It was just stayed in the fund.
Was it, was this project, is this project in the current CIP?
No, this was not in the current CIP.
Okay, but the thirty thousand was carried forward?
Thirty thousand was previously. I mean, we have an opportunity to, when we're done with the paving and the trail and the lights, we'd have a brand-new, pretty much a brand-new corridor.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion for the item?
Counselor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to install a streetlight on Eagle Creek Boulevard from Marshall Road to 83, using option B, adding the extra pole. Having Spuck pay for the electricity.
Do you have a second?
Oh, aren't you guys cute?
Got three seconds.
All right, I will choose Counselor Whiting, since he sounded like he was first. Any discussion? Seeing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, 10E1, if say that if we're going to take a break this evening, we should do it now.
Motion for a ten-minute recess.
Counselor Lehman, motion for ten-minute recess. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Way to go that end of the table. Seconded by Counselor Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in recess for ten minutes. Meeting and move on to item number 10E1, revisions to City Code, Section 11 dot 16, subdivision nine, tree management regulations. Ms. Polly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are here to ask for you tonight to adopt ordinance number 883, an ordinance of the city of Shakopee, amending Section 11.60, subdivision nine, of the Shakopee City Code, which is the tree management regulations. To give you a little bit of background on this ordinance, it was completely put together in its current form in 2008, and then revised in 2013, where we added a woodland alteration permit after three large development sites were cleared of the vegetation and trees that were on those sites. So that was last year, March. In April, the city hired a natural resources technician to fill the vacant spot that had been vacant for the last three years prior to that. When development was really booming, we did have a natural resources coordinator as development went down. We did not have that, but we really struggled in our natural resources area in trying to keep up with the management of our resources within the city. It was a priority that we had. So we did hire that position again last year. One of Jacob's, Bouzian's first task, and you'll meet him in a second as he presents to you, was to look at this ordinance, because it was, when it was revised in March of 2013, staff was sent back for further review of the ordinance to look at how it pertained to commercial industrial properties and as well as existing residential properties. There was discussion at that time about if we put a fence or a deck on a house, what that meant with this ordinance. So we have addressed that in the current form that's in front of you today. This ordinance has been seen by the EAC, the Park Board, the EDAC, and the Planning Commission three, at three different meetings where they had discussions. So it is a recommendation from the Planning Commission, what's in front of you tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bouzian to present to you the current ordinance, as well as what's being proposed to you tonight as changes from that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's a pleasure being in front of you tonight. So Ms. Polly already went over the action sought from you tonight. I'm going to go over some of the goals of the proposed amendments to this ordinance. First one is to create an incentive to preserve trees during development, align financial securities with the landscaping requirements, encourage creative site design, separate requirements for commercial industrial versus residential, further account for tree species and size, improve clarity on what is required from the developer for tree management, incorporate the natural resources corridor. So as a comparison of the current ordinance and the proposed, in the current ordinance, a significant tree is considered any deciduous tree six inches greater in diameter at breast height, or a conifer tree twelve feet or greater in height. With the proposed ordinance, that changes a little bit. Significant tree is broken down into an exceptional tree and a common tree. So an exceptional tree is oak, kikri, cherry, et cetera. There's a full list in the ordinance. And a common tree are faster-growing trees like poplar, elm, box elder. And a significant tree for a common tree is considered six inches or above. And then, a high-priority tree is considered an exceptional tree, fifteen inches in diameter or greater, versus the heritage tree that we have now, which is any type of tree that's 24 inches in diameter greater. So currently, in general, if you require, or if you remove three trees or three significant trees or more, replacement is required. Generally, for the majority of the city, it's a three-to-one replacement for significant trees, and for heritage trees, it's a one-to-three. So that means you can remove three significant trees, and you have to replace one for just a normal significant tree. And a heritage tree, if you remove one of those, you have to replace three trees. And those ratios change if they're within the natural resources corridor. What's proposed for this ordinance is tree replacement is required only when the allowable removal limit is exceeded, and we'll go through that in the upcoming slides. And the allowable removal limit is set at a amount that And the allowable removal limit is set at a amount that that we hope to allow development of that entire site without having replacement. So I'll go into the tree preservation plan right now. The tree, which is required for the current ordinance as well. But a tree inventory is to be done on the buildable land to identify the size, species, and location of the significant trees. Buildable land is considered everything but wetlands and bluff lines. So they wouldn't have to inventory those trees if there's no chance that they were going to go on that piece anyways. From that, a total amount of diameter inches can be calculated. And you can identify some of the high priority trees and areas. So trees that you would like to save or areas that you would like to save. The site plan that includes all of the trees that were inventoried and what's going to be removed and preserved, along with the construction grading limits and just the overall plan for that site. And then lastly is a tree replacement sheet. So that's just a landscaping, a landscaping sheet. So I'll go into the allowable removal limits for residential. And I do have a kind of an overview of the residential requirements and the commercial requirements that I hope you had a chance to go through. It was attached. And that was kind of, that was asked for by the Planning Commission just to give, give out to builders and developers, just so they can get a general idea when they're planning their site without reading through the entire ordinance, just letting you know. And this was taken right off there. So the allowable removal limit without replacement is in column A. And there are, the different rows are for developers and builders. So when you're developing a residential site, once you get your total diameter inches for that entire site, a developer can remove thirty percent of those for basic infrastructure. So basic infrastructure is considered streets, storm ponds, all the utilities. Once they exceed that thirty percent, they have a replacement. And that replacement is one to one point five remove, replace for diameter inches. So if you remove a ten inch tree, you're removing, you're replacing fifteen inches of tree. So it is a pretty high replacement, but that thirty percent is set at a number that I've discussed with other cities that they have between twenty-five and thirty percent. They said that they very rarely have replacement in those developments. So that's where I got those numbers. After subdivision, the builders are allowed to remove anything within the building footprint, footprint plus twenty feet in all directions of that building pad without replacing anything. They can also remove within the driveway and a total of twenty feet. So they can do twenty feet on one side of the driveway if they want. Or they can do ten on each, whatever works best for them. They can remove anything within that area without replacing. If they go outside of that area, they have to replace for the significant trees, a one to one for diameter inches and one to one point five for high priority trees. And if they save some trees inside of that, that limit, so maybe there is a corner where they had to get some construction equipment or for whatever reason had to have a little more than twenty feet and had to remove a couple of trees. Well, hopefully in another corner, they could save a couple of trees and still not have to replace anything. Another thing I'd like to mention was, Ms. Polly mentioned just a little bit about residential lots that are going to be building on. So there is a concern that we definitely, we don't want residents to have to go through this process. Obviously, if they're putting on a fencing or a fence or putting on a deck or something like that. So we exempt all residential lots under two and a half acres except for the initial building. So the first time that site is built, the first time a house is put on it, they're obviously going to be required to follow this ordinance. But anything done after that, if they wanted to clear the lot, they could clear the lot and there would be no penalty. So here's an example of how this would work or how this could work with a residential subdivision. This is actually a piece in Shakopee. It's over on the west side of town. So here's an aerial of this wooded parcel. So this is an eighty foot right of way, right here. And this is just an example of how they could do this development. So if they removed everything that has the red line through here for that eighty foot right of way so you can fit a road and all the city utilities and everything, I just put a cul-de-sac in there. That would be, that's roughly twenty-seven percent of that woodland right there. So they could remove all of that without replacing anything, the developer could. And then once the builder comes in, here's an example of a site plan that they could do. This is actually a plan from Dakota Crossings. So this is, I have outlined the actual building pad. And then the marker is roughly twenty feet around that building pad. So the builder could come in and remove all of that without replacing anything. If he went outside of the screen line, that's when replacement would be set in. And if you guys have any questions while I'm going along, just, just ask them.
I want to wait till the end, sorry.
Here's the allowable removal limits for commercial industrial. So for commercial industrial during site development, sixty percent of the total diameter inches can be removed without replacement. After they exceed that sixty percent, replacement is one to one point five diameter inches. In situations where utilities need to be installed off the site that they're actually building on, fifteen percent of the total diameter inches can be removed for, for basic infrastructure if they needed to put in a stormwater pipe that goes to a detention pond or something like that. And trees that, for residential develop, or for commercial industrial developments, trees that are preserved will receive credit in the landscape requirements. And we'll go over that in the next presentation, just to make you aware of it right now. So here's an example of a new development or redevelopment. New development, this is an example of removing roughly sixty percent of the woodland. So one thing to keep in mind, it's not sixty percent of the entire site, it's sixty percent of the woods. We don't have too many commercial industrial sites that have a significant amount of woodland on right now. So some people used Skanel as an example, and that was a very unique situation. So if you have that in your head, there aren't too many sites that I'm aware of that are like that. But for, for new development, yeah, everything marked with a red line could be removed without replacing anything. And if they had to remove some of this area, they would just have to replace. They can still remove a hundred percent of the trees if they want, but replacement will be required at that point. Here's an example of a redevelopment with thirty percent. So this is roughly the thirty percent that could be removed. If this was left, all left, no replacement would be required. Here's an example of a commercial site in town. This was, this is the Spuck site. Fifty-eight percent of this site was used in this. These calculations are obviously all off area. I don't have inventories of these or anything like that. But this is just to give you an idea, if this entire site was wooded and it was fairly homogeneous throughout, the same sizes and same species, it would be pretty directly correlated with the area of that site. So this right here is fifty-eight percent of the entire site, just to give you an example. And these, these remaining trees on here could count up for twenty-five percent of the landscaping requirements for the building area. Which is something I mentioned. To describe the financial security which is required in our current ordinance as well. The financial security for commercial industrial and residential developers. We still will be, or is proposed to collect the finance security at the time, either before grading, before any tree removal takes place. And that financial security is based off of the number of replacement trees required for that site. So if they remove, if this is commercial industrial and they remove under sixty percent, they wouldn't have to provide this financial security. But if they went over that and had replacement trees, it would be the number of replacement trees. And right now it's times two hundred, that's roughly the wholesale price that we can get a two inch bald and burlap tree for, times one point five. And the one point five is for installation and maintenance of that tree for two years. So after they provide the financial security, they can go ahead and remove the trees. And if the applicant receives a two-year warranty from the landscape contractor that's installing the required replacement trees for that site, then the financial security can be reduced by seventy-five percent after the trees are installed and inspected by the city. And that, that is a new part of the financial security. That we, we're still collecting the same amount, but we are just reducing that amount by seventy-five percent once they're installed, as long as they have a warranty from that landscape contractor. For residential builders, we go about collecting the financial security in the same way and it is the same amount. But as long as they have a one-year warranty from the landscape contractor and it's communicated to the buyer of that lot, the financial security can be returned in full at the time of installation and after inspection by the city. Another thing that was updated in this ordinance was an unauthorized tree removal fee. The unauthorized tree removal fee was in there. But the number that we had was based off of removing three significant trees which would have sparked the old ordinance. If, if someone cleared a site, ground out all the stumps and we really didn't have any evidence of what happened, we couldn't go there and measure what was removed, then there was a minimum fee for that, and that was nine thousand dollars before. That was bumped up to fifteen thousand dollars just because we tried to make it logical with this ordinance. So we set it at fifteen thousand dollars because we figured two high priority trees are one high priority area. We didn't think if someone was removing one or two small trees, that it would be reported or really brought forth to us. So that's, that's where the fifteen thousand dollars come from. A replacement tree currently, it's a, it needs to be a two inch bald and burlap tree. Is proposed to reduce the size of that tree to one point two five caliper inches. And that's just to open up some of the options for stock type. If you're getting a, a two inch tree, there really aren't many options besides bald and burlap, which can usually be fairly expensive. One point two five opens up pretty much all the stock types. So if they have some of these, if they had a big replacement requirement like Skanel and they're replacing seven hundred trees, they could buy bare root trees and pay thirty or forty dollars a tree versus three or four hundred dollars a tree. And every replacement tree counts for two inches. So if they replace it at inch and a half, it's worth two inches. If they replace a tree that's three inches, it's worth two inches. Every replacement tree is worth two inches. Here are some examples of sites around the metro area of ways that you can work with some of the natural features and not just. I've heard from some people that, you know, if you're developing a site, you know, it's just a, it's a given that you're going to have to level that site and masquerade everything. And there, there are a lot of instances where that's just not true. So I tried to find some examples on Google Earth and then find aerial imagery that dates back to before the development happened. And it was actually nice because they have the, the current roads on here. So you could kind of see how they planned the development before the trees were actually removed. So this one's in Chaska. You can see that they use some of the current open spaces, some of the fields. And maybe some of the lighter wooded areas to bring some of the roads through. And here's the result of that. So I mean, there's definitely some tree removal. I understand there's going to have to be tree removal for when you're developing a site with trees. But you can do it in a way that might save, might save some to, to benefit both the community and the develop, whoever's selling that, that lot should get a higher price. Here's another example in Inver Grove Heights. And that's the before. So there's obviously some tree removal, but they worked within the trees pretty well. And it, I haven't been to this site personally, but from an aerial image, it looks like a pretty nice site. Here's another one in Inver Grove Heights. Here's Prior Lake. And here's an example of a commercial industrial that I believe was, was, was worked within a woodland and was able to save, save some. I didn't have, I couldn't find a before image. The imagery that I found was only back to ninety-one. But that's an example where you can still see there's a lot of woodland. A large chunk of that site is taken up by buildings and parking lot. But, but it, it looks a lot better than a completely clear site. Here's another example in Plymouth. Here's an example in Shakopee that it's, this is Valley Creek Crossing, second addition, which is a nice development. But just looking back on how it was planned, I feel like we maybe could have done better. It doesn't really look like those woodlands were planted around at all. And that was the result. Here is South Bridge. So you can see where the roads went and some of the natural areas in the south side and some on the north side. And that was the result. Which, South Bridge is still a wonderful community. I don't want anyone to think that I'm saying it's not. But I feel like this is an example of a site that maybe we could have incorporated some more natural features into the, into the planning. Here's another site which, I realize some of these were, are unauthorized tree removals, but I guess I just put it in here as a reminder as why an ordinance like this is important. So that's before and after, and there's, to my knowledge, there's no site plan for this. Here's, there's Skanel on the bottom, Fourth and Shenandoah. So here's a list of cities with similar ordinances as far as allowing a certain percentage of removal before they require replacement and then requiring replacement at a fair, fairly high rate. So these are, I, I talked to pretty much all of these communities before or while I was writing this just to ask what realistic percentages were, how they liked them, or how they liked the ordinance, if it worked well for them. So you can see Savage during subdivision, they allow a little less than we do for residential. Maple Grove, they have thirty percent. Commercial industrial for Maple Grove is sixty to seventy percent, ours is sixty. Savage's is fifty percent for commercial industrial. Inver Grove Heights is thirty to forty percent for residential and fifty to sixty for commercial. And then over on the right are a few other cities that have these types of ordinances. If this ordinance went through, the effective date would be after its passage and publication. And the requested action of the mayor and city council tonight are to adopt ordinance number eight eighty-three. An ordinance of the city Shakopee amending section eleven point six subdivision nine tree management regulations or approve, and approve the official summary of the ordinance, number eight eighty-three. Now we'll open that up to questions, I'm sure there are plenty.
Thank you very much. Who wants, who has questions? Councilman Lehman, do you have some questions? You started off with earlier or just keep them fairly general right now?
Why, why a tree ordinance at all?
Why a tree ordinance at all? Because trees provide a very quantifiable economic benefit to a city, social benefit, and environmental benefit. If we don't have an ordinance that looks out for some of the trees that are some of the natural areas that we already have, you know, those take a long time to establish. And granted, we can replant trees and great for the people that are going to enjoy those fifty years down the road. But I guess I would rather see a city that has some mature But I guess I would rather see a city that has some mature trees right now. If if they're there, I think we should uh do our best to try to work around them.
Do we have a shortage of trees? Has our tree population been decreasing?
Uh, Councilman Lehman, as a new employee, I do not have the information to state whether or not. I I would imagine that at least over the last fifty years that they have definitely decreased in this a- area.
Well, it's actually increased because we got the build on empty farmland. And then we require we require required or at least the builder put entries to these properties. So we actually increased, probably one of the few because it was empty farmland. All right, next question. Um, the warranty period is different um for commercial than it is for residential. And then it's broke down again based on whether the homeowner gets a warranty from the builder or not. The same option is not um offered to commercial. So if a commercial development is developed and the builder or whoever does the landscaping and puts the trees in gives a warranty to the. End user.
Counselor, I'll make a correction. Uh, the homeowner doesn't isn't responsible for getting a warranty for that tree. The builder is. So whoever's required to install it will likely hi- hire a landscape contractor. And if they get a one year warranty with that and they provide the homeowner the information. Then they can get their fin- the builder can get their financial security back. And the reason we're doing that is because there are some, hopefully not that many. But there are some people that they don't they don't want a tree or they want a different tree or something like that. And it's a lot easier from our standpoint to to manage and say, no, you have to, this was a requirement. You have to keep this tree in your front yard for two years than. Or i- it it it's nice to not have to say that, that that they have to keep that tree in the front yard for two years.
My question, I guess, was if a commercial development is being built. And whoever is doing the groundwork and putting all the landscaping and stuff in puts in the trees and gives the end user. The information of the warranty, would not that security then be returned? Just as the homeowner or just as the home builder security?
So you're saying returning a hundred percent?
Is that what we're doing for the residential on your proposal?
That that's what we're doing for a residential, not not a developer, but a residential builder. So if a de- if a developer comes in and removes over that thirty percent. Then they would likely replace a bunch of trees in one area which would be a lot easier for us to manage. But if after that development, a whole bunch of builders build at different times. It's just uh it's a pretty large task for us to go and know, okay, so this is this is one year. This is two years after this tree, this single tree has been planted. We need to go inspect it now. Oh, it's not there. Or it is there, you know, we we're gonna make them replace it or we're gonna return a financial security then. So just for management purposes, we thought it would be a lot easier just to return that entire thing uh once it was installed.
Okay, well, I guess the problem I have with that is if if, let's say I I had a company build me a a new shop. And two years later, a year and a half later, a couple of trees are dead. Don't you think me as the property owner would look and say, gee, my trees are dead. I think I'm gonna replace them. Or I'm gonna call whoever's planted them and say, hey, your trees died? Don't you think I will do that? Why do you feel like the city or government has to step in and do that function for that individual?
Well, again, for a residential lot, we wouldn't do that. For commercial, yes, we would do that.
Right, and I'm asking why government has to do that instead of the property owner him or herself? Don't they have the vested interest and and the property right to decide whether they want a tree or not?
Well, I that property owner does. The developer who might have moved on to another project. Might not have an invested interest in that.
Well, I would think the property owner would go back on whoever built the site. If the roof leaked, they would call a developer whoever built it and say, hey, my roof is leaking. Anyway, I'll I'll continue if you don't mind. The, one of the comments you made was the, there was exceptions to, and I think you mentioned a bluff line. And I think our tree management identifier back in, God, it was early two thousand and one or two thousand and two. When we first did the first draft of where our prime trees were located specifically highlighted the bluff line. So I'm hearing, if I heard you right, you're saying that areas that are developed in a bluff line are exempt. And that's where, okay, then I heard you wrong. So I guess I'd have to get a clarification of that.
Ca- Counselor, I think you're referring to the natural resources design criteria. Which does not allow tree or any vegetative removal on slopes over eighteen percent. Or which is considered a bluff line.
Okay, and do do them numbers then still work in favor of that property? So let's say you've got a property that's gonna build a house in a bluff, bluff area out here. And you've got a lot, half of it is down a bluff. The trees on that bluff, do they count as part of the total toward the parcel even though they can't add or subtract from them?
They they do not count. So it's only buildable areas that the inventory is is on. So those wouldn't be counted towards that total percentage.
Okay, and then if I'm understanding the replacement criteria, if you took down a twenty four inch tree. You're gonna be putting up about thirty six little trees.
If if it was outside of that allowable removal allowable removal area, that's correct. If if they, if it was within that thirty percent and they took down a seventy inch oak tree. They wouldn't have to replace anything because it's within that allowable removal area.
The problem we're gonna run into is you're gonna have tree canopies over top of tree canopies which is unhealthy for the trees, especially on a small lot.
Well, in forested areas, if they've survived for long enough to create a mature canopy. It would be my assumption that they're they're fine to continue without a monocompetition.
And do we.
May- maybe I'm not answering your question, Counselor.
This ordinance on city owned property.
Yes, we do.
We we don't replace them when we take trees down?
We we replace them as much as we're financially able to.
Well, don't, shouldn't we have the same mindset with the property owner? That they'll replace them as much as they're financially able to.
To my understanding, we more than exceed the uh replacement uh of the trees that we remove within the city, Counselor.
And you're new, just for the record. So that's your understanding with very limited time here.
That's that's very true, Counselor.
All right, with the uh broad themes of this uh ordinance, let's try to stay out of the detail. For right now, let's just get everybody's gauge as to what you think about the ordinance uh and where uh you think we should go with things. Counselor Whiting.
Well, let's start with what I like. Uh, I like the new list of trees, uh breaking it down into exceptional and the high priorities. Um, and we just got awarded our Tree City uh award again. So that's good that we're trying to manage trees and trees are good. We like that. I don't have as much problem with this for residential lots as I do for commercial lots. And the reason is, is the financial security, um and I know we've we've softened that some, so that's good. But I I we're trying, in many cases, we're trying to attract commercial and industrial properties we have lately in the past few years. But it seems to me that this puts on quite a bit of burden for developers with that financial security. Um, you know, we're looking at, you know, two hundred dollars times the number of trees, times one point five replacement. And I don't know if you're out counting trees all the time, but it sounds like that's kind of a, that'd be a big package of what you're doing. And and I'm not sure that, I guess it's up to us if if that's, if we wanna put this burden. Cause when I see a a developer for commercial industrial come in, I see them, you know, cutting a swath, cutting in the roads and the parking lots. And and changing the the grades and and I see it very difficult to try and maintain some of that. That uh, you know, mature trees. So I um see it as more of an issue for commercial industrial. I think you can work around it somewhat in in residential, but that's just my initial thoughts.
Counselor Whiting, I'd like to make a quick comment on that. So that's why we are allowing them to remove sixty percent of, again, the total diameter inch is not the area. And only eighty five percent of the of the lot can be impervious. So there is some green space that needs to be allowed in the first place. So chances are they don't have to or probably won't grade literally the entire site. So with allowing sixty percent, that's hopefully not requiring many replacement trees. That's kind of, the idea behind this is not to require a lot of replacement trees. And if there's no replacement trees required, there's no financial security required. Currently, you remove three trees, you are required to replace a tree and you're required to give a financial security. So there have been some massive financial securities that the city has collected for tree management over the last, I know since I've been here. So we were hoping that we were giving a pretty good reduction uh to that financial security. Especially uh returning seventy five percent of it actually there or after they're actually installed.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mokel?
Um, well, I I I disagree with Counselor um Whiting in the fact that I don't feel that it's right to put it on the residential as well. But going back to the commercial, I'm not sure if putting more um ordinances in right now. As we're coming out of a recession is a good thing. We want people to invest in our community. And I think if you start putting more and more, the smaller businesses are the ones that end up paying the CAM charges. Because the developer has to do all of those.
Just as a clarification, Ms. Mokel, this is not a new ordinance. Th- we have an existing tree management ordinance.
I understand that, but you're asking to increase this now?
No, we're asking to change it so that it is more beneficial and allow trees to be removed without replacement or financial security. Right now, you currently, like Jacob said, take down three trees. You have a replacement and you have a financial security. So the hopes with this new ordinance was that we would get away from having any replacement and any financial security requirements. Still gain tree canopy within our city, but allow developers to come in and develop their sites as they need to. Building pad, roads, driveways, commercial building, but still get some tree canopy out of it. The only time they have replacement is when they exceed what we're allowing. Currently, right now, they have to replace it no matter what and they have to pay a financial security and we have to count all those trees. So hopefully this ordinance is not more restrictive than the current ordinance that we currently have in place.
Yeah, this is significantly uh relaxed, that's the word I was looking for. Thank you. Relax is what uh we've got in 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 ordinance today. Um, whether it's right or not is a whole other question. Um, but it's, it significantly reduces the financial security. And that's one thing that I'd like to talk about tonight is is what do we feel, what thresholds are we comfortable with, those kinds of things. Um, and then uh, but it 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 significantly reduces the um amount of replacement that needs to be done than it is currently. And that's, we need to figure out where where we're comfortable with going with that. Did you have anything else you wanted to say on that?
And and then in regards to a residential, I I just don't think that we need to tell them how many trees to put in their residence. I, when we built our home, our land, our builder did not put the trees in for us. So I disagree with that point that they're gonna come back after the builder for in a year or two years. So, but I would rather put the trees in because I want to, not because somebody told me to. And I, our ours was in a field, so the, any trees we added were a benefit.
Just clarification on that one as well, sorry. Um, is that uh this, the tree replacement ordinance, it doesn't uh, what you're talking about is the landscape requirements. Um, for the multiple trees uh for the installation. And what this is, is if you remove um trees or or however, we've got it all worded for things for the replacement. Of if trees are removed uh that were currently there. So like if you're building on an open field, none of this would apply to it, correct? That makes sense? But that'll be the next one that we can talk about for sure when we get there. Yes, exactly. Counselor Lehman?
The area, sixty percent area compared to the sixty percent inches. I'm not a planner, developer, anything like that, but it would seem to me that sixty percent of a piece of paper is pretty easy to gauge. Sixty percent of caliber inches is gonna take me a while to run around and measure every tree.
I'll find a photo to display this, Counselor Lehman.
So you're, somebody's gonna have to hire somebody to spend a week out there measuring every single tree. Pardon me?
We do require that currently.
Yeah, that's ridiculous. That's a waste of resources.
So here's an example of the difference between the area of a lot and the actual tree cover. And the reason we don't just wanna go off the a- off the area or e- even just in aerial. So if we would take pretty much what I did in this picture, we have no idea what sizes or what species out there. This area right here might be all mature oaks and this area right here might be young aspen. So if we plan this, just looking at that, it doesn't really save what we wanna save or take into account what we wanna count.
Is there a minimum sized tree? You know, if I walk through the forest, there's a lot of little bitty trees this big starting to grow just from seeds that come out of trees. And then there's bigger ones and so on. Is there a size of tree that you can take out without anybody caring?
Yeah, yes, Counselor Lehman, that uh anything that is not a significant tree classified as a significant tree. So those exceptional trees that I went over in the beginning, anything four inches in diameter or bigger. So four inches is roughly that big. Um, or a common tree, so elm, poplar, things like that, six inches or bigger. Those are the only ones that are inventoried. Anything else can be removed and it's not accounted for. We're we're saying in this ordinance, we don't care about it.
Counselor Lewis, you've been quiet, oddly quiet.
I've been through this one once before.
All right, you have any questions or anything right now? Um, go get your microphone.
Excuse me. I do, I think Jacob did a very good job. He's very passionate about his job. Um, I like his presentation. I don't like the inventory deal. I wish there was a way we could find to. Do an inventory without having to physically do it. You know, like like you're showing here, we we've got, you know, you don't get the full scope. I understand that. But I understand the fact too that developers aren't looking to, in most cases, come in and just wipe out an area. Because the trees benefit them too. Makes it a saleable piece of ground. People don't want a piece of ground that's totally empty. So um I think we need to take a little step back on this and look at it from the um builder's point of view. The developer's point of view, I guess, and um try and work things in with them a little bit better. I think we're putting quite a load on them, so.
Counselor Lewis, I'll just comment on on that. One of the, one of the things I heard a lot this summers from builders and developers was, wait a minute, you're treating this box elder. The same as you're treating this oak, you know? I I wish you guys would take into account species and size a little more. I mean, you can remove, under our current ordinance, you can remove three twenty three inch oaks. Or you can remove one twenty four inch willow and the replacement of those oaks is one tree, all three of them. The replacement of that oak is three trees. So. Or will, yeah, the 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 replacement of that willow is is three trees. So we are, we do not account for size and species very well. So that was one of the thing, that was one of the goals when we started looking into this ordinance and, okay, we we wanna account for this. The only way to account for that is to have an inventory of what's on the site.
The willow's the dirty tree, isn't it?
Some some call it dirty.
Yes.
Why does that have three trees for to replace and the oak, which I think is a better tree, only has one?
I have, I have the same question, Counselor Lehman, that because that's whatever.
Yeah.
Our our ordinance currently does not, does not have different classes for requirements. It it just says a significant tree is a six inch deciduous tree, any species.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the the example he just gave was that the willow was a twenty four inch tree, which right currently classifies as a heritage tree. Which has that higher priority. But if it was twenty three inches or or less, it would be the same as what that twenty three inch oak is.
Okay, all right. Well, my last comment, Mayor, is that it's ten pages. Let's try to shorten it up a little bit and consolidate her down. Okay. All right. Well, my last comment, Mayor, is that it's ten pages, let's try to shorten it up a little bit and consolidate her down. And let's try to uh loosen it up a little bit. That would be my, that'd be where I'd, I'd go.
All right. Before we get too much further, I know that uh Steve Soltau is out there. Can't, Steve is hiding in the back. He's uh oddly quiet as well. Um, and uh I'm, he has some things he'd like to say before we get into final discussions on this item. So, Mr. Soltau, if you could uh.
Anything but hiding, Mayor, thank you. Uh, just happened to be behind the camera, I guess, tonight. Steve Soltau, Shakopee Crossings, uh appreciate the opportunity to appear in front of you this evening. Uh, I've expressed an opinion to several of you about the evolution of this ordinance and the history of it and where it is and where it's going. And I appreciate the uh effort of staff in trying to make some very appropriate changes uh to this ordinance if it stays in place. But I take this back more to its core and to its foundation, frankly. And I ask, what are we trying to do? What, why? Wha- is there a problem, number one, and why are we imposing further and more regulation? Uh, in my mind, this uh ordinance shouldn't apply to commercial industrial at all. You have an objective with commercial industrial of job base, of tax base, of uh efficiency and development and evolution. And from day one, and this goes back to the original evolution of this concept as an ordinance in this community, I've suggested that what the commercial industrial needs is an incentive to the landscaping program. We will work with and try to save trees when and where we can, but when we work with large lots, large buildings, large parking areas, large infrastructure requirements, these lots get surrounded by public streets typically, private drives, and characteristics of an engineering and uh uh infrastructure requirement that offer us very, very limited opportunities to save vegetation, frankly. Where and when we can, we have. And we've got examples of that out at South Bridge. We've got area behind Samson Walmart uh near the lift station where we saved some trees. We've got areas on the northern boundary of the site where we've saved some trees. We've got areas south of Home Depot where we've been able to save some trees. We're not an enemy of trees, but we're limited by the characteristics of the product that we're working with. To that end, I've said if we have a landscaping ordinance then, and an incentive in that program, then we'll look for those opportunities to try to save those trees. We do try to look for those opportunities to save those trees. But as this ordinance applies in its current state and they are trying to make some positive modifications to it, but as it applies, in my mind, it's a, it's a penalty, it's an economic penalty uh for developing. Uh, sarcastically out in the hall said earlier tonight, we had the giveaway side of the program uh where we're supporting and promoting and trying to help businesses downtown. We want the facades to look good. We've got programs and tonight, the latter part is the takeaway. This ordinance is a penalty in the commercial uh development context. Uh, there's really no other way to look at it. We've got two significant areas on our property that uh have a significant amount of vegetation. And for better or worse, one of those areas did start to go through this process. And I've got a tree inventory management plan scheduled that was worked up professionally at significant expense and estimates of the uh implications of complying with the management program as a result. This study alone cost uh significantly over, I have an estimate only from the people that had it done of uh, uh, uh five thousand dollars for the inventory itself. Now, this inventory is not just, this is assuming everything was gonna be cut, given the character of the development. So it inventories, it indexes, identifies, uh measures and tags each and every tree just bef- so you can go cut it. Uh, seems to me like a, a overkill as an expense. Uh, in addition, it goes further and then analyzes the replacement requirement. Two hundred and forty-seven trees on that nine acre piece. Uh, the replacement uh caliper requirements uh had a economic impact of almost fifty thousand dollars. And that's not including the cost that we have just to deal with the trees anyway. Uh, it's not a removal cost. That's just the penalty that would be paid to the city.
Say that again for me, the two forty-seven?
Yeah, I believe it's, hang on, two forty-two. Tag number seven oh one through nine forty-three. You can go out there and look at every tag on every tree out there.
So are you saying that's all of the trees or are you saying that's the forty percent?
Plan that we had in place would have removed uh essentially every tree out there. They were looking at opportunities to try to save a couple of trees on the perimeter.
Right.
Work with a couple of uh, uh more significant trees, uh not necessarily within the definition. I'd also point out though that the, our land uh by where it happens to be located is also included in the resources, natural resources corridor. And where and how the evolution of this corridor came about is kind of a curiosity to me because I've been here the whole time. Uh, we've got a design criteria that also has an amendment on the agenda tonight that has two hundred and seventy-two pages of requirements that interacts with the design criteria map that is uh, uh, has uh different characterizations of
We'll get to that one later.
Quality. Yes, and, and how it applies and how it interacts is, I don't know how you could employ enough people to interpret everything and tell me how, what, what is it ultimately going to cost? And what is the outcome and what are we trying to accomplish? That's, that's part of the problem. It's cost, it's process, it's involvement, it's time, it's delay, it's uncertainty. And where there's uncertainty, there's risk. And when there's risk, businesses make decisions to go elsewhere. It's just that simple. And one of the things that I've suggested is that it's not the big businesses that are harmed by this, it's the marginal ones. It's the ones that are more entrepreneurial, it's the local ones, it's the ones that wanna come forward and have a great idea. They don't know how to deal with all the regulation and all the costs that's being imposed by this. I've asked to step back. I've not offered any specific uh comments to the ordinance as it exists or to the draft. I've asked, that we asked the question, why? Uh, what are we trying to accomplish and is there a better way to get there? In the commercial industrial application, I think it's overburdening. In the residential application, I would argue it's self-imposing. We developed South Bridge and have different character of uh, uh homes out there. We have everything from relatively high density or mid-density, as it would be referred to in the code, to what is considered light density. But yet meets density obligations of the community. It's not a, a rural development either. It's an urban level of development. It's not a two and a half acre lot on a sewored syst- on a, on a septic system. It's a sewored municipal lot. So a lot of these are a fourth of an acre or a third of an acre approximately. And in that context, we worked with South Bridge and to give you a little history of it, we put our arms around as many trees as we could, but you're trying to inner rowing roads, you're trying to work with perimeters, you're trying to work with uh geographical limitations, you're trying to make pipes work, you're trying to make roads work, you're trying to make grades work, so you've got housing compatibility. And we saved a large number of trees. Unfortunately, we lost a lot of those trees to storm damage uh just a few short years later. But we also voluntarily, in fact, we had to ask to plant as many trees as we planted on South Bridge Parkway and we had to create an association that has the affirmative obligation to maintain those because the city didn't wanna maintain the trees. We had to create an entity to maintain the trees. We did this voluntarily because we believed there was an incentive in enhancing value. And we believe that natural incentive exists. You can look at the density, more, more uh density parts of the South Bridge development too and you'll see that we save trees in perimeters, we save trees in the interior. We save trees everywhere we could because we have a natural incentive to do that. We didn't need anybody telling us to do it. We also planted trees on every single residential lot out there. We didn't have an ordinance that required us to do that at the time. So in my opinion, frankly, the residential application doesn't need it. The market puts those pressures on the builder developer.
And you gave a ten percent open space.
Correct.
I was here for that.
Correct.
Um, any questions for Mr. Soltau? I have one for you uh with regard to the um uh tree. I'm having a hard time speaking today. This is, I'm not quite sure what the issue is. Um, but the tree inventory, there we go.
Yeah.
With regard to tree inventories, would you generally do that anyway on properties? Um, on, like, I have to assume that on uh like the residential developments, for example, you, you had to do a tree inventory on that property in order to know where the roads could go and know all those kinds of things. How do you do that then?
We staked everything, we walked it, we spent a lot of time reviewing it uh individually. We laid out lots, we looked at elevations, we put ribbons around trees that we felt we could save. We did it ourselves. We did not hire a forester or a crew of other professionals to tell us what we should do.
Would you do it the same way today?
Absolutely.
Okay. Further questions? Counselor Lehman.
Did you drive your moped tonight?
I did not.
City requirement, passed it earlier.
I'll take note of that. I did wanna comment one thing specifically in the, uh, the financial security has been discussed as one of the more significant burdens and it is a burden. It's a huge burden. And I think people uh fail to uh recognize the, the realities of placing a financial security uh and obtaining a financial security because it's very easy as a municipality to sit here and say, but we need to protect the city or we wanna make sure there's compliance with this. Number one, I'd say, where's the lack of compliance? Where's the problem? To my knowledge, I don't know that these letters of credit are ever getting cashed. Uh, uh, we generally have compliance. If we don't have compliance, you've got other methods to enforce compliance. The letters of credit are basically a blank check. Uh, to have a bank, a financial institution of significant credibility and wherewithal issue that check or that uh, uh letter of credit, um, you have to have that capacity or that money in the bank. So if you're gonna build a million dollar road, you better have two and a half million dollars worth of financial capability. So you just significantly reduce the number of people that participate in the development activity, if you will. The other aspect is this is being looked at right now is that we're suggesting that a two-year maintenance bond is somewhat standard. Uh, there are landscaping companies that will provide a two-year maintenance bond, uh but it's becoming uh o- only by demand. Uh, and one of the things that the companies are concerned about in offering those is then they wanna know that those uh, uh plantings are properly maintained. In fact, they wanna maintain them. They'll make sure they're watered, they'll make sure they're canopy, they'll make sure they're covered, they'll make sure whatever, whatever's required. So it's just an additional cost when you get into that, uh, and a significant cost at that. And I'd point out that then that typically, the landscape companies today run their one-year maintenance bond from when they complete their installation. Well, from the city's perspective, it's not running until the project is accepted typically. So uh more typically, when we do public improvements into a road, until that's accepted, nothing starts. So we've got a loss of time there and an exposure to the developer that's not covered by a maintenance bond currently. You put a financial security on top of that and then you get to an extended point in time, you're another year out because you're talking about two years from when it is accepted in the part of the city. And then you've got a situation where it could be, you have uh half a dozen trees in there that need to be replaced. They want an extended warranty on that. So you'll have a reduction in the financial security, but an extension of the time of the financial security. It goes on and on and on without process. And I just want you to be aware that th- that's only one piece. We get into financial securities on many other aspects of development and the requirements are burdensome in a nutshell.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Luce.
Yeah, the only comment I can come up with here is we're just trying to protect the city from the bad developers. You know, maybe one in ten, but that's the problem guy that we gotta watch out for. Um, I just hope we can find a way not to be as burdensome on the good guys.
Right, exactly. Counselor Whiting.
You know, I think this, you know, staff has done a great job making this a better ordinance. Um, I think we need to step, I mean, I think we need to look at it some more to try and improve it even better. Um, but I'm not sure.
How so? What does that mean?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not sure we're ready to throw the whole thing out either though. I think we need something like this. But I do see it as that financial security is a burden and um, um, so I, I am not willing to uh just blanket, throw it out and not do it.
Let's break this up into pieces here. I mean, there are a lot of different uh, a, a lot of different balls in the air on this one. Um, let's first start with a little bit of discussion. Uh, to me, there's a clear difference between residential developments and commercial industrial developments. Is that accurate from everyone's point of view? Is that?
I think so.
I don't think so.
Why?
Um, I just think they should be treated the same.
Why?
The commercial developer and the home builder basically have the same stake in it. It's their livelihood. So they're both gonna try and do the best job they can. Um, they're both, you know, for a house, I mean, most people, they wanna buy a house near woods. You know, they, they like the, being in the country feel. So that developer, it's a premium for him to save every tree he can. You know, so if we give the, the commercial guy a break, we need to give the residential the same. I personally think this is too big for us to do tonight. I think we should table this, bring it back to a workshop and then kick it around there and we'd have plenty of time to do it.
I agree. Make that motion.
I mostly agree. Hold on just a second on the motion. Um, I would like to get some more direction from folks up here as to what, what we think so that some work can be done on it and then it can come back to us. Cause I, I uh, um, very much agree that we need to, to look at this some more, but we need to give some direction as to um, where, and I guess we can have it at the, uh, the next workshop is pretty full. Uh, no, the, we could bring it to the workshop on May sixth.
Let's buck and uh garbage roll out. It just depends on how much time you wanna spend.
Yeah, we can talk about it more at that point. Um, and is there anything specific uh direction that folks can give right now as to what they don't like or do like about this? And we'll just kind of walk down the line again um with regard to the tree preservation ordinance. Counselor Whiting?
Well, I think it's uh important to keep it on uh for uh residential. I, I see the, the value of replacing trees, but I think that's in the landscaping ordinance and it doesn't necessarily mean in the preservation ordinance that we're looking at here for the commercial industrial side. So I, I would like to take a look at um, you know, maybe wrapping up some of this information in the landscaping ordinance and just remove the commercial industrial part of it.
Counselor Luce?
I would like to find a way to do the tree calculations or, you know, the counting in a more efficient manner. So if Jacob could come up with something, you know, if, if we can do an aerial view and get some of it done, maybe just walk the area and, you know, mark out on, on a map to where, you know, not do every tree, but just the really good ones. Um, I think we would be doing just as much good as we are with, you know, doing the GPS on every tree and measuring them.
All right. Counselor Mokel?
Um, I agree with Counselor, Counselor Lewis. I, I just don't think doing every single tree is necessary.
Again, a correction, council members, it's not every tree. It's only the significant trees. I just wanted to make sure that that was uh, that was known.
Yep, and that uh, but an entire tree inventory still needs to be done of the significant trees, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anything else? No? Counselor Lehman?
I would like to step back on the, this portion of it, not necessarily the next item, but and I would like to identify, like, the original woodland management uh study and tr- now we call it tree preservation, but I, I would like to go back and identify these areas of concern and why. Originally, it was the river, riverfront, the bluff line by one sixty-nine, the townships and a couple other small pockets here and there. And once we identify them areas, which we've already done, and it's, instead of expanding on that to where it gets overblown and out of control, we need to make sure them areas are identified. And when something happens in them areas, then something kicks in to protect that area.
I would like to comment on that as well, Counselor. Originally, we were trying to have separate requirements for the natural resources corridor that was identified through a pretty significant study, to my understanding, and have different requirements from everywhere else. And then we really started looking at the maps because we were trying to identify, you know, what are the actual areas that we're concerned about and what do we want to happen with them? And almost every one is within the natural resources corridor that's left. So that's, th- this, this ordinance is almost taking place of the requirements that were in the natural resources corridor woodland section. So I, I just wanted to identify that, that that was, that was something that we did look at and the majority of the wooded areas that are left are within that identified natural resources corridor.
I disagree. I was actually part of, I was here for that whole study and like I said, there was three areas identified. This covers anywhere in the city.
We, we, we could bring up a map if the.
We'll, we'll get to it when we get to the workshop. Uh, we can discuss it at that point.
At any rate, I'd like to see it loosened up a lot more, and, you know, I, I, we do have development of commercial industrial property that, especially the bigger box items, that do tend to come in and wipe the slate clean, hurry up, put all their infrastructure in the ground, put all their black tops and sidewalks and building structures on and everything, and parking lots, and then come back under the next item on the agenda and put in their landscaping. To me, the more important thing isn't the clear cutting and putting all the infrastructure in and building the product. To me, the more important part is the end result of what they put back on the site. And I, you know, it's not necessarily, to me, geared toward what used to be on the site, because you could take an empty farmer's field, put houses on it, and put, put trees in yards and things like this. Or you could take a fully treed parcel, level it, and put a two hundred million dollar operation on it. You know, where, which one's more important to you? I think the trees are important, but so is the industry. So I don't think we can penalize one for the other.
I think this does a good job of trying to balance that with the sixty percent maximum removal on it, of, of trying to handle that issue that you talk about right there. So I, I just want to commend you guys for, Jamie Jacob, for the work you've done on this, because I know you've been trying to incorporate a lot of different opinions and thoughts and a lot of different things to get this right. And it's come through the system to where it is today, and I don't, I don't feel we're all the way there yet with this. My thoughts on the tree preservation ordinance is that, like I said last time we went through this, is that commercial industrial should be exempt. But I think that if the city wants to have development and zone something as a commercial industrial zone, then that pretty much guarantees that most of those trees are going to go away. But I also want to put in some fairly good incentives into that process so that if they do maintain the trees, that that counts for the landscape requirements, which is the next couple of items and, and does that. So I, my thoughts, just so everybody knows, is that this is a very good ordinance for residential developments, that this has the tree preservation, if it's a, if it's a wooded lot, that it absolutely. If people are, like Steve was talking about, if people are doing the right thing and maintaining the trees that are there to the best of their abilities, I don't think this has much penalty whatsoever for the developers that are doing that. And so I think that for residential-wise, this is really close to where we need it to be, but commercial industrial is where we, we, in my opinion, need to work on it. So does anybody have any final comments, then we'll table it. Councilor Whiting?
One last thought. I think this is an improvement over the ordinance that we have. So I would, until we have this conversation and meet and talk about this, I think we should move ahead and at least improve this ordinance until we can decide to change it in other further ways. So I would, I hate to put something in as a temporary ordinance, but I think, you know, this might be the case where we do this.
Councilor Lewis?
I have some agreement with that, you know. If, if it's making it better, which I believe Steve alluded to, that he likes this better than what we have, it's an improvement. We can refine it some more. I believe that anybody who goes through all this work should be given a huge amount of credit for the next step, the next thing that we're coming up with. They should be exempted from a lot of that if they're going to do all this.
You mean the landscape requirements?
Right.
Okay.
If you're going to save a twenty-five inch tree, you should have a lot of credit for that, because that tree is old. And, you know, that's basically what we're trying to preserve is mature trees.
Concur. Anything else, then, motion to table if anybody's got one?
Residential property, it's, it's private property. The only way this should apply to is government-owned property. I don't need the government telling me how many trees I want or can have on my property.
It doesn't apply to your property. Two and a half acres or less, it doesn't apply to.
It should apply to my five either, my five acres, or my ten acres, or my forty. None of your business is mine. I'll do what I want with my own stuff. I don't tell you what to do with your.
I do what I want.
Well, really, it's your own personal property. If it was a city's property and they want to have ordinance on their property, have fun. Don't tell me what to do with my property.
Councilor Lewis?
I'd like to make a motion to table this till the first day that we can schedule it for a workshop.
Second.
Uh, that would be May sixth, am I correct?
Yeah, on the twenty-ninth too, but.
Uh, not the twenty-ninth, May sixth. You okay with May sixth?
I wouldn't be adverse to adding a date sooner.
I, I don't, I don't think there's a.
May sixth is not that far.
Yeah, we're a few weeks from that. And we've got a added workshop on the twenty-ninth as well, so. If May sixth is okay.
Fine with me.
Councilor Lehman, you okay with May sixth? All right. Any discussion?
I, I just think we should move, move what we got ahead. Since it is an improvement, we're getting into a.
Motion to table doesn't allow a discussion.
Oh, yes, for discussion.
I did ask for discussion. Thank you for that. So no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Not being Bucky, just keep rolling.
Thank you for the parliamentarian there. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Table two sixteen fourteen. Okay, with that being said, Jamie Jacob, I'll ask you, how much of the rest of this do you want to go through tonight? Or do you want to, would it be more, make more sense to talk about it at the workshop? These other two items at that point, or would you rather go through it tonight?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think it may be beneficial for Jacob to go through the landscaping part, just to give you an overview of what those changes are. You can move to table them as well. As far as the natural resources corridor update, that's what I was actually just mentioning to Jacob, that I was going to ask that you, at the start of that one, just move to table that, because that one correlates with the item you just discussed. So there's no real neat reason to go through that until we get the management regulations underway, so.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to item number ten E two, revision to City Code, Section eleven dot six. Sixty subdivision eight, landscape requirements, ordinance number eight eight four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The action sought tonight is if concur to adopt ordinance eight eight four in ordinance of City Shakopee amending eleven point six subdivision nine landscaping requirements. The goals of the proposed amendments are to increase the survivability of required landscaping in parking areas, align financial securities with, with tree preservation regulations, reduce negative impacts associated with large areas of impervious, impervious surface, account for all impervious surface on the site, and sustain tree canopy within the city, as well as create pedestrian safe zones and site connectivity. I'm just going to address some of these goals with each slide. So for tree survivability, currently, a tree island is required to be a hundred square feet per tree, and we actually discourage putting in over two trees in an island. Give them additional credit for larger islands. So what we end up with is a whole bunch of small islands scattered throughout the parking lot. What's proposed is a tree island, tree, tree island is required to be increased to two hundred and thirty, thirty-three square feet if planted among other trees, and encourages planting multiple trees in one island. So this ends up with larger islands and fewer of them throughout the parking lot. The reason, the reason I'm proposing that is because a hundred square feet, or in a landscaped island that has a hundred and square feet is not a sufficient amount of soil for a tree to actually grow and survive. So we're requiring them to put in trees that are ultimately doomed. So here's an example of a hundred cubic feet, five hundred cubic feet, and a thousand cubic feet. So a thousand, a thousand cubic feet is the two hundred and thirty-three. The, the cubic feet is the requirement that's in the ordinance. I just translated it into square feet, so you could have an even comparison between the old and the proposed. So what's proposed is enough soil volume for roughly a sixteen diameter inch tree. So tree survivability and reduce cost. So another way of trying to reduce the cost is the tree size at planting. So currently, a two-inch caliper tree, which is pretty hard to get anything two-inch that's not bald and burlap, is required. What's propo, what's proposed is the same as the tree management regulations. One point two five caliper inches, which greatly opens up their choices for species and stock types. Some of the advantages of planting a small tree is they cost less, they recover quicker, more quick, quickly from transplant shock, they're typically cheaper to install, and they offer more planting stock choices, which I mentioned already. Allowing for few landscape, fewer larger landscape islands, they're typically easier to construct. It's a lot easier to construct one big straight line versus a whole bunch of small lines throughout the, throughout the parking lot. And there should be less tree replacement if there's higher survivability, so if there's an increased planting size, if they're recovering quickly or from transplant shock, and it increases the overall benefits received in the, from the trees in the parking lot. If you're able to actually allow a tree to mature in a parking lot, it's going to provide a lot more benefit than a two-inch caliper tree and staying at that two inches for fifteen years, and eventually probably having to be replaced. So here is an example. This is the Coles in town. So this site right here meets our current landscaping requirements. You can see the smaller landscape, scape islands scattered throughout the site. And here's an example of one landscape island that would meet the, the proposed requirements. So this would obviously be a lot easier to construct. Probably have a lot, or you should have a lot higher survivability of trees within that area. And the argument may be thought that, you know, we're, we're taking less or we're taking more of their parking space away, but if you look at the majority of the parking lots in town, I don't think I've ever seen them full. And I mean, I think this is a good example. Storing a bunch of snow in a, in a parking lot over the busiest season of the year, that's obviously not the most valuable resource to them. The landscaping requirements for commercial industrial, the amount of landscaping required currently is based on the gross building area alone, and a portion of this must be placed in parking areas with more than fifty parking spaces at a rate of one island per four thousand square feet. What's proposed is the current requirements as stated, but instead of a portion of those requirements being placed in the, the parking lot, they would be in addition to those requirements that, that are for the gross building area. And another change was that they, they could substitute native plants for turf if they meet the city requirements in code ten point seven three. The landscaping requirements for residential, currently, there is one front yard tree that's required and, in the front, and sod, turf grass, and sod and turf grass. What's proposed is two trees in the front, and if, and they can be either planted or preserved. So if the new ordinance takes place and they end up saving a few in the front yard, they can replant, they can count towards those trees as well. And the exception to the two is an R one A, which requires three, and that was at request by the EDAC and Planning Commission. The financial security for the landscaping currently, we collect a hundred and fifteen percent of the cost of landscaping. It's held for one year. What's proposed is to collect a hundred and fifty percent of the planting stock. And don't get confused by those two percentages, because it's a hundred and fifteen percent of the total landscaping cost. So that's not just plant stock, that's whatever it costs to buy those, that landscaping and install it, that's times a hundred and fifteen percent. So we're, we're likely actually collecting less as far as the total amount goes for financial security. And the financial security works the same. Seventy-five percent is returned upon the installation inspection of the plants. And the remaining twenty-five percent is held for the two years. If, if there's a warranty by the landscaper given for residential lots, again, a hundred percent of it's returned. So one of the goals was sustaining and improving the urban forest. So currently, there are quite a few threats to the urban forest, Emerald Ash Bore being one of them. A significant amount of our urban forest is ash, and this is going to be something we're going to have to deal with in the near future. It's in the metro area already, so we're expecting a pretty large reduction in our urban forest coming up. And we're also a developing community, so obviously with development comes tree removal. The city is also currently not planting boulevard trees in new developments and rarely plants in easements, because we don't have the city's staff to, to maintain them. So with this, I compared some different cities, and I picked five different sites throughout Shakopee and tried to estimate what their requirements would be compared to ours. And I'll show you that analysis. Some of the assumptions with this was that no significant trees existed on site before the development, so there is no tree removal that happened before. The buildings on the site are one-story or less than twenty-four feet tall. And the reason I did that was just because some of the other cities had different specific, or requirements for buildings larger than that. So all the landscaping, the shrubs and grasses and things like that, they're in addition. This is just for trees. And the cost of tree insulation does not vary by the planting size. I think it's pretty safe to assume that to install an inch and a half bare root tree versus a four-inch bald and burlap tree, you're going to spend more money to install that tree, but that's not taken into account for this. And the tree prices are, as shown below. So I called or contacted four wholesale nurseries to see what I could get these different trees for, so the different sizes. So you can see there's, there's a significant difference in between a smaller containerized tree and a larger bald and burlap tree. And if we give the option to use bare root on some of these bigger commercial sites, that's a pretty significant cost savings. So the sites within Shakopee that I included were Coles, the North Star Auto Auction, First International LP, CVS Pharmacy, and Applebee's. And the ones I compared, or the cities I compared, were Shakopee's current and proposed ordinance, Chaska's, Chanhassen's, and Maple Grove. So here's a background of how they were calculated. Shakopee's current, the gross building area with one hundred square foot landscaping islands, and the proposed is the, is the gross building area plus the paved area. Chaska's works off just the gross building area, and then they require five percent of the parking lot to be landscaped with landscape islands. Chanhassen is just based off the total area of the lot, so it doesn't, it doesn't account for the building size, the size, or the amount of impervious surface is strictly based off the size of that lot. And Maple Grove is the length of the perimeter, and then four percent of the parking area needs to be landscaped. So this is the first site that I analyzed. The Cole site, so as you can see, here's, here's the building area, here's the impervious, impervious surface. I know there are a lot of numbers here, but I'll, I'll try to explain them. So on the Y axis, this is the required number of trees. On the second Y axis, that's the cost for those trees. The cost of the bald and burlap trees and containerized trees, that's the, the red line right here. And the cost of bare root is this right down here. So, and I actually forgot to take out option two. Option two, I presented to Planning Commission, they ended up giving option one. So as you can see, on, on the Cole site, the current requirements require eighty-nine trees at a rough cost for those trees of twenty-one thousand dollars. The proposed requires a hundred and fifty-two trees, but we actually reduced the cost of those trees due to the planting size. Uh Chaska's requires a hundred and eighty-two trees for this site at a cost of about forty-seven thousand. Chan Hassan is about eleven thousand, Maple Grove is about sixteen thousand. So that so that's the one I meant to show you, so I should have deleted that previous slide. So the First International LP, that's forty-seven oh four Valley Industrial Boulevard, that's this site right here, so it's very close to the auto auction. So that's a, you can see that's a pretty big building right there, but not a whole lot of paved area. So you'll see the the differences in the calculations here. So the current, the current Shakopee requirement would be a hundred and fourteen trees, the proposed would be a hundred and forty-six. Again with a reduction in cost. And again, keep in mind, this little triangle down here is if they bought bare root trees, so that's an option, I mean, they're limited as far as the planting time for bare root trees, but if there's a significant amount of trees that are required, I would say, you know, probably worth trying to schedule properly to be able to use those and have that cost savings. Again, Chaska's fairly high, they require two hundred and eighty-nine trees with a cost of seventy-four thousand, Chan Hassan, Maple Grove follow. North Star Auto Auction. Uh what I did with these sites is I tried to get a good picture of all kinds of different site layouts, so sites that had a whole bunch of impervious surface and small buildings or big buildings, not that much impervious surface and then either in landscape island or there is a required amount of green space that are on commercial industrial developments, so.
These are done things already, so curious to where they are now.
Can you say that again, counselor?
These are, you're using examples that are currently there.
That that's correct, I I just tried to, I just tried to find sites and estimate, you know, this is what our requirements are and this is what other cities' requirements might be for a site like this.
Yeah, this is just if these were being installed today.
This is all hypothetical. It's trying, it's just trying to give a comparison of uh
See any place to plant the tree on that site.
There aren't many, there aren't many.
That's why it needs parking lot islands.
But so again, so this is the
Mayor members of the council, let me comment on that, our experience in the commercial industrial side is that typically the developers of commercial industrial sites install more parking than the city ordinance actually requires. So oftentimes when you see a very large parking area, certainly it's true of North Star Auto Auction, which was developed quite a long time ago. It's because the business insists on that and I will highlight for you the example of the Lowe's in a conservation open space development. And we suggested to Lowe's in their planning stage that they didn't need all of the parking they wanted to construct under the city ordinance. They were insistent, they wanted all of the parking that they put in. So it's often not the city requirement that results in all of that.
So again, for the North Star Auto Auction site, lots of impervious surface, small buildings. These would be the requirements, so currently, since the requirements are only based off of the size of the building, it's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five trees required, what's proposed is four hundred and ninety-four, which I know sounds like a huge number, but I do not think that that is a site that will probably happen again, I guess it was just trying to show you that uh the 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 differences or what what this uh would account for. So again, look at the, I I would say in this instance, it would definitely be worth looking into bare root considering the cost for those four hundred and ninety-four trees could be roughly sixteen thousand versus the sixty-four thousand or the eighty thousand that Chaska would require. So again, Chan Hassan and Maple Grove, they're those those requirements, one thing I will mention about Chan Hassan is ornamental trees are not in this calculation. But uh those are determined at city council, so those are probably low estimates. CVS Pharmacy. Here is the uh cost estimate for that. And Applebee's, here's the cost estimate for that. And just to give you an idea of what parking lots can look like, I mean, there are other cities that that have fairly large green spaces and plant trees and they can look a lot nicer than a large ocean of impervious surface and there are a lot of there are a lot of benefits that come along with this rather than just aesthetically pleasing. Here's another one of some mature uh mature honey locusts. Here's another another site with a nicely landscaped parking lot, here's another one. Here's an example of the Target or the Coles in town. Or I forgot again what this site was, but this is also in town. Uh the last amendment that we're proposing is having to do with sidewalk connectivity. Uh here's an example of what the requirement would be, it would be a sidewalk in the interior of the parking lot. There are a few examples, this is the Home Depot in Richfield and a Rainbow in Roseville and I was gonna hand it over to Mr. Leek to maybe discuss that a little further.
Um members of the council, we can certainly discuss that if you want to at this point. This is an issue that in our review over the last eighteen years, we've tried to tackle a number of times and I'll acknowledge Mr. Soltau. Uh because when he secured the best buy for the Southbridge area, we in fact had that discussion at the planning commission, I believe it's his view that it really isn't something that's necessary. Um as planners, we've seen it work effectively in other communities to provide islands of safety. Um in areas like Southbridge to provide um connectivity. I might point to the community of Apple Valley, if you look at Apple Valley, um they have lots of sidewalks. There are not a lot of connection points to all of the redevelopment that you see in Apple Valley, so you very seldom see people on their sidewalks and they certainly are not moving from the sidewalks into the redo- retail development and I think it's because it's not a terribly hospitable environment for pedestrian purposes, so that's the reason for having you consider this, you may or may not choose to do that. As I said, I think Mr. Soltau probably still has the same concern, he did back when we discussed Best Buy.
So again, if this ordinance was passed tonight, which doesn't sound like it's going to be, uh the effective date would be after passage and publication. Here's the requested action, are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, any uh questions and comments on this one, Councilman?
I think the sidewalk thing is, it can't be a requirement. I mean, it's, it might work in some locations, but I can give you some other locations that it wouldn't work at all. I think a cub comes to mind, the 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 traffic pattern in is in cub is from the door to your car to the little thing that holds the cart. That's if you watch people, that's what they're doing, they're going from the door, taking their cart to their car, entering the cart in the car and then going from their car with the empty cart to them little things where you load the cart in. And that just is the traffic pattern, it's a, it's what it is, you can't really, it's what it is. So it might not work in that setting, it might work in a different setting, so I think the word requirement doesn't fit everything.
Councilor Loos.
I would say people unless they have little kids with them are gonna take the shortest route possible. And even with little kids, they're gonna take the shortest route possible.
I actually like them, I think it's safer.
I I think it'd make it um difficult to plow if you didn't know it was there, you could tear up a truck pretty quick.
I was gonna say, it it looks nice until it snows and then you can't get to them anyway.
And then the other concern I would have, I do agree that you wanna make sure that wherever you're planting your trees in your parking lots is big enough for the tree to live. I mean, that's a no-brainer, but I think the size that you're going is pretty extreme. I almost think a square would be better than a narrow, long, just a bigger square.
Uh there's there's a pretty significant amount of research on that, counselor, and the amount of uh available rooting space that a tree needs. And that's that's what I based this off of and uh there's been quite a bit of research also, uh the symbiotic effect that have planting a tree next to another tree has because they can actually graft roots and use nutrients from, you know, this massive amount of root system versus only their, that they're one, so that's one of the issues that we have with planting one single tree in a small square in a parking lot.
And it takes away your ability, especially at the mall up here, to be able to come in this access and cross multiple parking lots to where you're going. You have to turn around and go back out and come back over and come back down.
Which is a good thing.
That's not today's society, today's society is convenience.
It it's not a requirement that it spans the entire parking lot, just to make that clear, that was just an example of the size that would that would meet that uh the proposed ordinance.
Jacob, I think they call those smaller tree planters tree coffins.
That is, that is correct, counselor, I heard that term as well.
The industry there, so I like the idea of, you know, giving those a little more space, but I mean, the example you showed looked like they had taken out sixteen parking stalls to do it, to get those trees, I don't know if it was uh our uh Coles, I think it was, but and then that was my question about the parking stalls, but I think Mr. Leek answered it by saying that they typically go over, cause we do require a certain amount of parking stalls for for retail establishments, so.
We do and we require a certain number of parking sto- stalls based on the use of industrial and business park property as well, but as I said, my experience here has been that typically um the sites that we've reviewed over the last several years have exceeded the city's parking requirement. One of the things you need to remember about that requirement is that we also base it where it relates to floor area, for example, on the net floor area, so if we have a hundred and fifty thousand square foot commercial industrial property, it is not a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, you net out storage areas, you net out restrooms, you net out um cafeterias and so on, it's that area that's actually used by employees that you're calculating. And in some cases, if it's office warehouse, which most of our uses are, um it may be calculated based on the largest shift, so you could have that building with fourteen people. And maybe a a small amount of office area, they may provide a lot more parking than we would require because they see that as their business need.
So we have our requirement and the the builder, the 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 building owner likes to have more. So we add in these these tree areas, these uh landscaping areas and they still would want more, so they'd be taking more space, so I think it's kind of a never-ending, it's kind of growing expansion, like
Uh, no, that's not the way it would actually work. It would uh enhance the parking lot and it wouldn't.
I agree, I think it would look good, but
No, what I'm saying is that they wouldn't need the more park, cause it's the space, it's the, it's the psychology of it, if there are spaces available, that they'll go there. Um and that that's, that people will, it makes it more accessible to folks um at that point. Yeah, exactly, and so it's the psychology of it that that creates that, which also is created by uh landscaping as well. Uh but one thing, uh a couple of things I wanted to um say is that again, thanks for your work on this one. Um I don't think this one was as much wholesale change as uh uh the last one was, but it uh has a lot of good improvements in it. And I think that the um connectivity of sidewalk uh has to stay in, I don't know exactly what that looks like, if it always has to look like it looks at Best Buy, but we need to be able to connect from sidewalk road systems to buildings and any new building that's built needs to have a sidewalk that goes to that building, cause your example of Cub, I couldn't disagree more with that is because I ride my bike to Cub with the kids and there's no way to get there, um if you're riding your bike uh with kids, cause it's a a death trap uh to do that, um and so we should be able to access and have connectivity between all the buildings um and our our sidewalks and trails and and road system for people to walk and ride their bikes, cause uh um I think it's important as we uh continue to move forward on those things, Councilor Loos.
Two points, um if they're gonna put in these Long Islands and they're gonna be parking into them, I think that we should give them credit for the two feet of overhang the vehicle has on the island and remove that from the parking space because it's not needed. Um the other thing is, if we're gonna demand them to put in a sidewalk, we should count that as a green space because it's something they can't use. But we're demanding it and, you know, it's got a good purpose, um you know, in in some cases, but to make it beneficial to the developer, I think we need to count that in some respects as a green space or, you know, if we can give them fifty percent credit, something like that, I would give them a hundred percent credit because they're trying to do two things. Trying to make it safer for the public and um I guess here only one thing.
Sidewalk in the middle of a parking lot is a bad idea, you're encouraging people to walk where people are driving, it's like putting a sidewalk down the middle of First Avenue, it's kinda stupid.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying it has to be right in the middle of the parking lot, I'm saying it has to connect somehow.
I I agree with that connection argument because
That's what it is, right?
That's that's more of a larger development issue where when when Cub and that area was designed, we didn't have a sidewalk coming up from barreling up into the site. Getting into the site, once you're in the site, you've got plenty of space on all the huge parking lot to walk anywhere you want to. And there's stop signs and speed bumps and crossing stripes and everything else, so I'm not, I'm not on board with the required sidewalk in a parking lot, but getting to and from sites on the city's rightaways and easements and stuff is no, is a no-brainer, it's like the trail systems make these things connect.
Can I say something on that, that you just said right there with the, um one of the slides that that Jacob had in here was uh Home Depot in Hopkins and that's Orion Company's development and they're, it, that one right there, that's a a client of mine and there are people on that sidewalk constantly because off to the left, to the west here, it's all residential development and so that's the connectivity and you don't want those people walking down the middle of it.
But that's not on a parking lot, that's on an island. I'm I'm envisioning just putting a par- uh strip down a parking lot and say, here you go, it's not, that's not gonna work.
Members of the council, I don't think that was the intent of the language, that we'd simply require that they put a um at-grade sidewalk connection. The intent is that it would be grade separated and to the issue of it happening, um I'm glad you mentioned Cub because when that development was done, um we tried to argue for pedestrian connections and guess what we get the most calls about in that development, not having those connections and not being able to get the management company to do anything about it at this stage in history. So either you're going to try and make those connections and I think the Southbridge area is a good example. You've got residential areas, the folks use the trails and sidewalks in Southbridge quite a bit. I suspect some of them go to the retail uses, but there aren't good ways for them to cross those retail uses and linger there, like you want them to linger in downtown.
Alright, Councilor Loos.
This picture here depicts what I was talking about. If they would get more credit for green space with that sidewalk running down it, you know, there, that's where you're getting two things done at once, you're getting your green space, you're getting your sidewalk, you're getting your pedestrians safer. You know, it um, I understand where Matt's coming from, he's talking somewhat of a sidewalk at grade level, this is all gonna be raised up six inches at least, so the car, yeah, they can jump the curb, but the, it's gonna have to be a major malfunction or deter- deliberate.
Right. To to clarify, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it is required that uh it's it's vegetated, there are trees placed around that sidewalk, I just, I didn't go into detail on that. But it is in the in the ordinance.
Thank you, uh Mr. Soltau.
Steve Soltau, Shakopee Crossings, again, I appreciate the opportunity to address you on this item. Relative to more landscaping in the parking lot, I want you just to point out and I appreciate that Jacob's tried to address this in a way where he's trying to actually reduce the cost. But I wanna point out that that's one element of cost, that's the plant material itself. And the most significant cost that we're missing in this entire discussion is the land consumption. And you you hit on it a little bit when you look at the Coles uh or existing sites, you're either gonna have less or you're gonna have less building area and less tax base, or you're gonna have a bigger parking lot. And I've been leading a campaign, I appreciate the comment relative to the overhang because I've been And I've been leading a campaign, I appreciate the comment relative to the overhang because I've been. Uh, trying to address this issue in several different formats where I think the oversight. Depending on the character of the use, sometimes the parking stall is an appropriate size, but where you don't have carts and where you have continual, uh, uh. Smaller cars, our star, our stalls, in my humble opinion, are too big. We've got nine by twenty foot standard still stalls when they're parallel. And no allowance for overhang when it's on a perimeter, no allowance for overhang when it's adjacent to a sidewalk or landscaped area. Uh, things of that matter. So it becomes an item of efficiency and utilization of what are the municipal, the city's resources as well. And I just want you to understand, if you're doubling the number of trees in the lot, you're going to consume land area with this as well. Uh, you'll have a larger lot to serve the same building, or you'll have a smaller building on the same parcel. So the Cub parcel, by way of example, uh, if you. Wanted, uh, more of these landscaping trees and the connecting sidewalk, you'd have less buildable area on that site and less tax base. So just something to make sure you take into consideration. We did voluntarily do a connecting sidewalk on the Best Buy development. Uh, it's, uh.
Thank you.
Not landscaped. Uh, I would tell you, I think it lays out and functions aesthetically very well. Uh, it's got the handicap stalls immediately adjacent to the front entry door and then that width, because they're parallel stalls. Allowed for the width of the pedestrian connection and then it, uh, extended out. Um, in that context, it extends out to the sidewalk and it made some sense because we were trying to recognize the importance of making some of these. Types of connections. I've got other areas of our development that will be coming forward where I would plead for common sense. Because we don't wanna create pedestrian connections out to the highway, in my humble opinion. You know, we've got. Home Depot in the area north of it that you'll see, uh, hopefully in a not too distant future. And outlots out there, but the character of traffic, I'd actually discourage that type of movement frankly. Um, you're not gonna get a lot of movement from the big box to the outlots in the rear and then you've got a highway in front, so. I'm not sure just a blanket requirement of a, of a connection is always the best thing.
Thank you.
Is this the Loles you said?
Uh, this is a Home Depot.
So, so somebody actually walks to Home Depot, picks up a couple of four by eight sheets and walks out with them and walks on?
There are multiples through there. There's one for Home Depot, there's one for Target, there's one for, uh, another retail area. So there are a bunch of them that go through there.
I just can't, can't picture somebody walking to a home improvement center. I mean, most of the items you buy there are big and heavy.
All right, um, any other items on this and then let's table it to, uh, May sixth with the tree preservation. Counselor Lehman?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? No, we don't need discussion. Dang, sorry about that. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are tabled to May sixth. Thank you guys again for your work on this. Um, Counselor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to table the natural resources corridor design criteria to May sixth.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are tabled in May sixth for, I don't remember, uh. Uh, ten E three. So, thank you. I would've skipped right past that one. I was on that, that page already. Um, all right, item eleven, Councilmember reports. We'll start on this end. Counselor Lehman?
Oh, we did that one earlier, didn't we?
Yep.
Um, one sixty-nine corridor coalition, met with that group, uh, Met Council was there talking about transit and, uh. Two things that come to mind, one was. They are doing a study about a men pass lane on one sixty-nine down to Shakopee. And I was nice enough to ask which lane they were gonna use, the left or the right lane. Since I already paid for them and use them both already, it'd be nice to know which one I no longer can use, but must pay again to use. Well, at any rate, they haven't decided, it's in a study phase and I told them maybe they could add another lane to it. Since the ones we have are already overused to begin with. Um, then they were also looking at. A study that they're doing a transportation, uh, uh, BRT bus rapid transit study. Um, coming down one sixty-nine to, uh, uh. What is that road running the other side, uh? Right on the other side of, of the river. Old Shakopee and the next one, Anderson Lake, Anderson Lakes and the one in between there. And they were trying to figure out where they wanna put their. Which bus stops to use and create this new route and where it's gonna go and, and, uh, it looks like they wanna add a bunch of stops. And there's a lot of discussion about within them and the surrounding communities about. They're kinda developing a, an in-between route with a whole bunch of stops. That competes with the other two on either side. At a substantial, substantial cost to add all these, um, stops and shelters and stuff. So it was a pretty interesting conversation. Talked a little bit about the sales tax, you know. Um, state looking at a sales tax, Scott County looking at a sales tax, would one go away if the other one is proved or would they? Would we get stuck with both of them or how would it work and where would the money be spent and a lot of questions, no answers, lots of questions. That's the way it goes. Um, Derby Days, uh. Talked a little bit about security issues. We're gonna have a, a follow-up meeting on that on the twenty eighth, twenty eighth, I think it is. Um, they're looking for volunteers and donations and sponsors and committee chair people for the various events that they do. ShakopeeDerbyDays.org. If you wanna go to their website, sign up, help out, make a donation, whatever, uh, we would appreciate that. Um, and I think that's, oh, went to the scale training facility with the rest of council and a couple of folks from the audience and. Got from the newspaper and watched Mr. Tab Karamier. Spot on shooter, boy.
Ooh, baby, am I good? Yeah.
But it was, it was a good visit. We checked over the facility and stuff and there was something going on. I think it was Savage, wasn't it, out there, fire department doing some stuff, so.
At least I didn't claim my gun didn't work. I didn't try to blame it on somebody else.
Right.
I was out of bullets.
Blanks. I couldn't hit a darn thing.
Yeah.
But it was, uh, it was, it was.
Are you fishing for a compliment?
No, no.
I don't think you're gonna get one.
Quick draw, quick draw.
Counselor Mokel?
Uh, Thursday, March twenty-seventh, attended the Shakopee Diversity Alliance meeting. Um, they're looking into becoming a five oh one C three and had presentations by John Mokel and Jim Conway on the pros and cons. Um, on Thursday, March twenty-fourth, Doctor, or Mr. Dahlay will be making a presentation on Somali culture at six thirty at the Shakopee Library. Um, the Shakopee Chambers last meeting, they had a presentation by Scott County Commissioner Gary Shelton. On the Scott County Transportation Tax that they are proposing. And on Wednesday, the ninth of April, I attended the State of the City. At the Knights Event Center with presentations by Mayor Tapke and School Superintendent Rod Thompson. Uh, Mr. Thompson talked about the successes of the past year as well as the challenges. Um, as they move ahead in regards to the failed referendum. They will be putting together a team to research what is next. The sign up was last week and unfortunately, we weren't able to. As city council members to sign up because one of the meetings was during our city council meeting, so. And so they asked for a commitment to all of the meetings, so. I don't know if any of you signed up.
I did.
Did you? What, are you gonna miss council meeting? Just kidding.
Sure.
Let them know upfront, yeah.
Yeah, I think they know.
I didn't feel, I didn't feel comfortable doing that if they're asking you to commit to all of them.
The rules don't apply to us.
Yeah, apparently.
You can attend the first hour.
We can, we can cut down our trees.
Yeah.
Counselor Luce?
Um, I attended the school board meeting last night and they're putting together questionnaires. And it sounds like they really wanna get as much input as possible, which I think is a great thing. I suggested a couple of spots that they might wanna put their questionnaires for pay-per-view. Um, City Hall and the Police Department, if people are stopping by to do something, they could fill it out in a couple minutes. And it'll get back to the school board and they're gonna compile everything and it's gonna be reviewable by the public. Um, the one item that I did, uh, last week that I think everybody's gonna be wanting to hear about. The FRA was in town and, uh, we had a very good meeting.
Could you explain for everybody what the FRA is?
Uh, Federal Rail, Federal Railroad Authority.
Yeah, forgot that.
And they will determine whether or not we get a quiet zone and turn that train horn off.
Yes.
Um, it's gonna be very involved, very lengthy, um, don't plan on seeing it. Best estimates, if we had a signed. Everything's signed on the dotted line right now, it'd be two years. We don't have that. We're in the very preliminary discussions. Um, Dr. Bruce Lonnie, who was in on the meeting, he got through their website and got into their test scenarios and was able to. Get a lot further than I got and he actually got it down to where he can start playing with the calculations. So he'll have something more for us, uh, in a few days.
Let me, let me add just a little bit on that, Mike. The, uh, the, the FRA doesn't necessarily determine. If you are gonna be a whistle-free zone. They have a calculation that they determine, they use. For anybody to determine your at-risk percentage based on various criterias that they have on their calculator. And there's ways of mitigating that risk, whether it's fencing off your railroad or four quadrant. Arms or, um, other things that you do. So you can work this worksheet by doing these various things to see where your percentage comes down to and then you can make some changes and. Um, regardless, it's gonna be lengthy and, and expensive, so we'll see where it goes from there.
Little addition to yours.
Yeah.
They are going to demand closings. We're gonna tell the public that right up front. There's no way we're gonna get around it.
We don't have to make any closings, it's just gonna be more expensive.
Correct, but.
So they're not requiring their formula, if you go down a criteria and you have a thirty-five percent and you're looking for a different percent. You could, you would have to put four quadrant arms at all your crossings. Here's how much that costs. If you close crossings, well, you don't have to put. Closing arms on them because it doesn't exist. So you save money that way. So it's not a requirement that you make closings. It's a, it's an option to reduce the cost.
And along with that, if council chooses to go down that path, of course.
Right.
It with, if we wanna quiet zone and if we, if we wanna spend the money to get there, it. Council decision to where, how that happens and, and where it goes.
Yeah, if we can justify everything at, you know, like we say, this is. In the infancy, we're, we've made one meeting, we gotta go a lot further.
You might find that you have to close half of your crossings, put, uh, uh, four quadrant crossing arms with pedestrian crossings. At the other ones and have fencing put up on your rail through the heart of Shakopee in order to even qualify.
Right.
We don't know, haven't done the calculations yet.
Got it. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Congratulations on getting that meeting set up. That's a very good thing, so thank you very much for, uh, your hard work in doing that. Counselor Whiting?
Oh, thank you. Uh, Thursday, March twenty-seventh, I attended the same meeting as Councilmember Mokel, uh, with the Shakopee Diversity Alliance. Uh, Tuesday, April first, I attended the Scott County Board Public Hearing regarding the sales tax increase to be used for transportation and transit needs. I was very surprised by the amounts of comments that were, uh, in support of this proposal. Uh, Monday, April seventh, twenty fourteen, I attended, uh, the SPUC meeting. There is, uh, progress on their property acquisition, uh. The west, uh, end of town, uh, County Road sixty-nine or First Avenue. Uh, with the spring thaw, a couple of water leaks have been repaired on water connections, uh, that were recently installed. Um, nine fifty-two Atwood and nine fifty-three Atwood, also a water leak on, uh, West Sixth Street. Um, which was due to, uh, um, I guess this is common after a year after they've been reconstructed, there's some shifting and. Those were repaired in, in record time, so, uh, that's good. Uh, and I'm very proud to announce that Shakopee has been awarded the honor of the best tasting water in the state. By the Rural Water Association. So everybody, drink up. Uh, a sample of our city water will now be submitted for national tasting to be held in Washington D.C. in the future, so we are going to the show. Best tasting water in the state.
This is how we spend our, our rate paying dollars on sending water to Washington for these guys to drink?
Well, this is a big deal. This is good water, you know, we gotta, we gotta celebrate this fact. This is good.
There goes my taxes.
So, uh, Friday, April fourth and April, uh, Friday, April eleventh, uh, had the scale, scale met and we discussed the Thrive twenty forty plan. Uh, Scale will be sending a comment letter, uh, as I, uh, recommend that our city does the same, which I believe we are. Uh, specifically regarding the city's classification, uh, this could affect future development projects and land use. Scale is. Uh, also had a presentation by Families Moving Forward and the Scott County CDA regarding homeless families and subsidized housing.
Road funding. In our scale letter, Shakopee's letter for the road funding that the Met Council's cutting. Building their train.
Uh, all right, I just have a couple, March, uh, twenty-ninth, uh, folks, a couple of folks from the school district and, uh, myself went. Uh, led MWI, uh, veterinary, uh, clinic that's consolidated their operations into Shakopee. We did it. A bus tour around town, uh, to show people housing and, and why they want to, uh, move here. And so it was a pretty great. Thing. I was, uh, surprised that it went as well as it did. Um, and, uh. Some folks are relocating from Mankato to here with operations, so, uh, MWA had purchased a company. Um, in Mankato and they're, uh, moving their operations up here, so that was, uh, very good. Um, and then just, uh, as. Uh, Counselor Mokel said, State of the City was on Wednesday, the ninth, um, and then that afternoon I had a, uh. Um, Municipal Legislative Committee Board Meeting, um, at, in St. Paul, and it was basically an update on, um. Uh, legislative actions that have been taken that have, uh, will affect cities. Uh, there's been tremendous improvement. Uh, to the, um. Sales tax exemption for the cities. It didn't include joint power, uh, associations before, and so now. Uh, majority of the, uh, joint power groups will be recognized as having, uh, uh. Sale be, as being sales tax exempt as long as it doesn't, uh, conflict with a private industry. So if something the private industry can be doing. Then, um, sales tax is applicable to that. Um, and, uh, then on Sunday, I spoke with the. Uh, Pamela Sherman's Brownie Troop and so about Shakopee and, and what we do in Shakopee. And so it was a lot of fun to do those kinds of things. And then yesterday was Regional Council Mayor's and we had, uh, presentation, um, from, uh, Tom Landware, who's the. DNR, uh, Commissioner about groundwater use and groundwater, uh, and they're believed, he believes that there will be pushes. To, uh, limit uses on groundwater into the future and, and change over to surface water, which may have implications on cities like Shakopee. Into the future. So it's something we just need to keep our eye on as that goes. So, uh, that is all. I have any, uh, other business? I don't remember twelve for the evening. Counselor Luce?
Um, the leaks that were found on Atwood, I, that's the block I live on. There was a leak last fall also and. Three leaks in a fourteen house block seems like it's awful high to me. So I think when the, uh, street repairs come up, um, for the summer, for the sewer and water and all that. We may have to look for a little more, um, insurance on the projects. Um, I talked to the water superintendent and he thought it was high too to have three in one block, so.
Got it.
The, the construction company did repair those and I don't believe there was any cost.
But I, I just wonder if the three of them that quick, what can we expect in the next year or two because, you know. If the workmanship was at for.
Well, who, who double checks their work is the question.
Well, that brought up concerns for the, the SPUC too, so they, they will be looking in the.
Does the city look check up on this or does SPUC check up on it or?
This might be something that, cause it is a, a water function that we could talk about on the May sixth joint meeting.
Very good.
One other comment about your joint powers and, uh, tax exempt status that, uh, SPUC was discussing, uh, with the new water tower. Um, they, they can utilize the tax exempt status, but they have to cancel out all their warranties on the build. So that, uh. It's more valuable to them to have that warranty than take the tax exempt status. So that's something that the legislature has to look at. Again, I think, and, uh, uh, remove that warranty clause as far as that tax exempt for these joint powers and public u- utilities. That's an issue.
All right. Counselor Lehman?
Well, I wanted to bring, uh, bring a proposal up to council for taking a look at a. Some kind of an ordinance for drones and the use in the city of Shakopee. Um, not that I'm anti-drone, I think it looks like a pretty fun hobby when it's done properly. Namely, if you're gonna have a drone and you wanna go use a farmer's field or a park or a parking lot or whatever that you got permission to be in, I don't have a. Typically don't have a problem with it, but when you're flying over somebody's personal property without knowing if there's a camera on it or not and buzzing around. Uh, that's to me unacceptable and an invasion of privacy. So. Took liberty of printing out a current ordinance that was passed in our neighboring city of St. Boniface. Um, I could see, I, they made some pretty good points in, in their, uh, policy. Um, and I tend to. Um, and I tend to agree with most of them. So I would uh, like to ask if the council has any desire to consider this at all and if they do, have staff look at it a little more.
Councilor Whiting.
You know, I think uh, you know, I thought of this too and it was in the paper on Sunday too, a discussion on this and I think that it. We may want to wait until other cities have to take this through litigation. Uh, before we decide to take on something like this, um.
Your litigation is gonna come sooner than that because if it happens to me again in my backyard, I'm gonna sue the city for not protecting my privacy.
I think.
On the reverse side.
Mr. Thompson wants to weigh in on something like that.
Mr. Thompson, you wanna weigh in on something like that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure if the question is, I wanna weigh in, Mr. Councilmember Lehman's right, is it a property owner or on the, on the ordinance? I, I, I do know about the ordinance, I do know it was adopted. Um, if the council wishes, we can look into it, I have some concerns about whether the city has authority to regulate in this area, but. I wouldn't, I'd wanna look at it in more detail than I have already.
Does the city have an obligation to protect my personal property?
Well, it's a pretty general question, but. If, if another property owner is interfering with someone else's property and rights, they certainly have claims against each other, I, I.
So we've got conflicting problems here.
I'm in favor of looking at it, I'm not gonna say I'm in favor of it, I'm just gonna say I'm in favor of looking at it.
I'm in favor of looking at it as well.
Alright, Councilor Lewis.
I'm in favor of looking at it, but I'm just wondering if it doesn't come into the same realm as flying a little airplane over the city, you know. If it goes out of control, somebody's gonna get hurt seriously or could possibly get hurt. These drones have the same capabilities and I think from a safety factor is what we may have to look at it.
Well, a meteor could also fall from the sky or, you know, a, a plane could drop an engine as it's flying over as well.
I agree with the traffic safety.
And they all have happened.
Yeah.
With children's safety and uh, you know, your, your privacy issues, but uh, I'm wondering if we wanna take this on. Or we wanna let another city play with it for a while and pay their lawyer to, to run through it, uh, before we kinda look at it, just give it some time.
I'll, I'll give you another spin that nobody's thought about and although the reason you haven't thought about it is because it hasn't happened to you. Okay, since this is ongoing in my neighborhood with a lot of complaints from a lot of different neighbors. With no controls from anybody, what's gonna happen is I'm gonna have to go buy one, fly it and have a demo derby in the sky to stop this.
A four-ten zip gun.
I'm dead ser- I'm dead serious and then that's gonna be the model for everybody else because the city can't control it, the FAA can't control it. And you can't prosecute because you have nothing to say somebody can't do that. So you, you won't be able to tell me that I can't fly mine over their house or into their objects above their house or the neighbor's house. And this is gonna become a, a larger problem.
Alright, we have a majority of council that wants to at least look at this, um, as to see what it would look like, um, two months?
Whatever.
Come back in two months?
We'll bring it back as quickly as we can.
Is that, is that an acceptable timeframe? Okay, alright, thank you, everybody, any other business? Thank God, nobody raised their hand, let's have a motion to uh, adjourn to April twenty-ninth, seven PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn till April twenty, April, what was the date?
Uh, April twenty-ninth at seven PM.
Twenty-ninth at seven PM.
Do we have a second?
I'm gonna have to second, I'm, I'm sorry.
Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously, we are adjourned.